Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Town Council meeting for the town of Yountville. It is June 7th, 2011. For those of you who are joining us in the council chambers, feel free to pick up any agenda materials that are on the wall to your right. I also ask if you would please turn off your cellphones because it does cause interference with our firefighters have a call. But the cellphones do cause interference with our audiovisual equipment, so thank you. With that, I will ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, Closed Session Report. Is there a report?
Mr. Mayor, there is not.
Thank you. Move on to Item Seven, Adoption of the Agenda. Are there any changes? There is one correction, I believe?
Yes, to the May 3rd set of minutes reflecting that Councilmember Hall voted no on the Tacos Garcia item. That's been corrected.
So that goes to Item 9C of the May 3rd minutes. Thank you. Are there any other corrections or is there a motion to adopt?
I move that we adopt the minutes as amended.
Second.
This is actually for the Agenda?
Agenda, excuse me, Agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll be getting to the consent calendar in just a moment. But next, I will offer a public comment on anything that is not already agendized on tonight's meeting. So if there's anything that is not listed for discussion tonight, now would be the time for you to bring it up. And it does not look like we have any public comment, so we'll move right on to the consent calendar. Items A, B, and C, we've noted the one correction to the minutes of May 3rd. Is there a motion?
Move to approved consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Moving to Item 10, Presentations. We do not have any presentations, it looks like. So we will continue moving right ahead and move on to public hearings, Item 11. And I will be, first of all, this is regarding 1873 Yountville Crossroad, considering adoption of the making of findings in support of the Town Council's determination to uphold the Town Manager's decision denying request to provide out-of-town water service. Also, I will be recusing myself from both Items A1 and A2 because my residence is within 500 feet of this property. I have not been participating in the discussions nor any open or closed session conversations. So with that, I will step down and ask the Vice Mayor to chair this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a clarification, this public hearing item is 11A. There are, it's somewhat unusual, there are two potential resolutions listed here, A1 and A2. So we will be proceeding with that if we can get a staff report.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the Town Council. Before you this evening is a request for reconsideration from the property owner and the appellant of the property located at 1873 Yountville Crossroad, which is the subject property at hand. From the meeting of May 3rd, the Town Council considered this item and made certain findings and determinations and directed Town Staff and Town Attorney to return with a resolution incorporating those findings and decision. From that process, there was contact further from the applicants and the property owners of this subject property seeking a reconsideration of this matter. The, there has been rather lengthy and at least hopefully productive discussions with respect to attempt to resolve this matter in order to avoid litigation, but also to recognize that there is a feeling from the property owner that there was an error, but an apology to the town for what has occurred, and also recognition from the town in an effort to try and cooperate with a new property owner. As a result of this, you have an item before you that is for your consideration to consider the approval of a out-of-town water service settlement agreement in substantially the form as presented, which would make the town whole for the costs incurred for this process that would define the water usage to this property as an out-of-town property, subject to its terms and conditions set forth in the settlement agreement. I have had an opportunity to discuss this settlement agreement at length with the legal counsel for the property owner, and also city staff, and Mr. Rogers have reviewed this matter, and we feel that there is a appropriate possible resolution if the Town Council agrees. If the Town Council does not concur with the terms of the settlement agreement as presented in substantially the form of the document that's been presented to my office, then you would have the ability to not reconsider this matter and adopt the resolution that was presented to you at your last meeting. So the options tonight are either 1A is to consider upholding the Town Manager's decision and adopt the resolution, or Item A2, which is to consider the resolution of this matter by approving the out-of-town water service settlement agreement in substantially the form as presented, and to adopt Resolution Number 2970-11.
Does the Council have any questions for our Town Attorney or other staff at this point?
No question.
No questions?
I did have one.
Councilmember Mueller?
Based on our discussion, do, if we approve one, do we have to take any action to reject the other one, or just approval of one or the other is sufficient?
Councilmember, if you approve A2, that in itself would overturn A1, so you would need to take no action on A1.
If we approve A1, then we would...
You are not approving A2, and there's no action.
So it's by default.
It's one or the other, yes. I should note that the property owner and their attorneys are present this evening if you have any questions.
Any further questions for staff? None. I will open the public hearing and first invite the property owner or their representatives to please come up if you would like. Mr. Lamond, could you state your name, address?
Sure. David Lamond, 1873 Yountville Crossroad. And again, I just want to reiterate what I said at our last meeting, which is, first of all, I'm extraordinarily sorry for everything that's happened here. Never intended this type of situation to happen in the first place. Your Town Staff has done an extraordinary job helping us work through these issues, and I hope we've reached a fair conclusion, and I hope that, I hope that this will work for you all. And my wife, Kelsey, and I are very excited to become parts of this community and hopefully be big contributors to the community going forward. And again, I'm just very sorry for having taken your time and your time and staff as well. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Anybody from the public? Your big chance? No? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing and bring this back for further questions of staff or discussion and/or a motion. Is there any further discussion from anyone? No? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Well, I guess, just a brief comment.
Comments, that's right.
Yeah. I recognize that the property had been serviced by the water historically, and certainly the town, I believe, followed in the steps that was associated with the process for turning on or turning off the water as necessary. I do feel that Steve and the staff acted in the manner that we expect them to as the Town Council. I just wanted to make sure that I communicated that because I'm not exactly sure where this resolution will turn out tonight, but I just want to be certain that we recognize that our staff did, as we asked them to do as managers, or if you will, as the council over the community, that we believe they followed, at least in the steps that they were set out for them. So I just wanted to recognize that.
Any further comments?
Yes, please. I also feel that under the circumstances that our Town Staff handled the situation as we would expect them to, to protect the town. On the other hand, I recognize there's a young family who, you know, had good intentions, and so we want to, you know, also extend the hand of friendship to a family to move to town. So I think all the way around, it was unfortunate, and we feel sort of strange being put in this situation, but I think that everything will work out.
Someone would like to make a motion?
I will move to approve adoption of Resolution Number 2970-11, overturning the Town Manager's decision to deny water service to the out-of-town property located at 1873 Yountville Crossroads in Napa, California, to approve the out-of-town water service settlement agreement.
That would be in substantially the form that's on file at this time because we're still hammering out a few lawyer words.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Can I ask the Town Clerk for a roll call vote?
Yes, thank you. Vice Mayor Chilton?
No.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
That motion passes three to one. Congratulations. And is there any further action to take on this?
No, there isn't.
Okay. Then we are complete. We will bring back the mayor for Item 11B.
I thank the Vice Mayor for sharing that item. And we will move on to Item 11B, Introduction of Ordinance 398-11, Amending Yountville Municipal Code, let's see, as it relates to residential-scale commercial zoning district. A staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that goes back to some planning workshops that were held at the end of 2010 and the beginning of this year, and also is a follow-up to the discussion on the wine and beverage and food definitions that were passed in April. The questions that were before the council had to do with uses in the residential-scale zoning district. Three of those four questions were cleared up, and those questions that were resolved were the provision of all transient uses in the residential-scale commercial, the prohibition of new full-service restaurants, not encouraging the establishment of businesses through incentives that would be considered local-serving businesses. And the third question that remained somewhat open was the requirement for local-serving businesses. By deleting the roughly equivalent language that appears in the current ordinance, it says, "Businesses that rely principally on visitors for their clientele shall not be permitted." That language was struck from the ordinance as a result of the food and beverage definitions. However, the council expressed an interest in encouraging or devising a way to encourage businesses that would serve local needs, but not be exclusively local-serving in the sense that they would rely also on visitors for their clientele. So the new definition that came out of the food and beverage definition work is that all primary uses, commercial in nature, include small bakeries, limited-service restaurant, restaurants, mobile food vendors, wine tasting rooms, wine shops, food stores, variety shops, services, professional offices, and other uses deemed by the Town Council to be similar in kind. New full-service restaurants, ends, wine tasting bars, bars, and nightclubs shall not be permitted. Expansion of existing restaurants shall comply with FAR limitations established in Title 18 Division 2, Section 18040, 030. So what came out of this was a bit of a split, 3-2 split on the council regarding the allowance for any wine business within the RSC, but the majority of the council allowed wine tasting rooms to continue, but did prohibit the wine tasting bars, bars, and nightclubs from the RSC. So in terms of establishing some way to encourage businesses that are more oriented towards locals, staff has divided the list of uses into three categories: prohibited uses, conditional uses, and permitted uses, which would be uses by right, with that last category not being subject to approval by the Town Council. They would be administratively approved and thereby provide a streamlined process to where they would be encouraged in that way. After being confirmed as eligible by staff, they would have a 10-day notice pending action published, and then following that would be allowed to open. Typically, every commercial use in every zone district right now is required to get a use permit from the council. So this is a new thinking in this area by streamlining and defining this list of use, 22 uses on the list here, and these are non-exclusive. If the council wishes to strike a use off of here or add a use, that would, off of any of these lists, that would be fine. But the idea of uses by right is a new concept. We did add to the prohibited uses some additional uses that tattoo and piercing salons, adult-oriented businesses, marijuana dispensaries, tanning salons, and then any other use, of course, that comes before the council, they deem similar in kind. There's another use in addition to that list that's open. The conditional uses are essentially following on what came out of the beverage and food definition work. And then the permitted uses by right, staff attempted to come up with some fairly common types of uses that would be available and useful and to citizens of the town. Couple of things that would get also amended in this is, we have a retail overlay zone that covers most of the primary commercial and residential-scale commercial zone. This has additional requirements for street level, what can be at street level. You can't have residential, you can't have in-units, you typically can't have offices. They're meant to be on the second floor. We did have two exceptions for the Chamber of Commerce office and real estate offices, but otherwise, we would carry those requirements over to these three categories. And then there was one other amendment to the use permits that has a blanket, as I stated earlier, that every commercial use is required to come before the council, and it would recognize except where there's excluded or an alternative process is defined, and this is suggesting an alternative process by the uses by right. So that is a suggested new language by staff. It is, there is an ordinance in your packet that summarizes that, and if you have any questions I could answer, I'd be happy to.
So I'll just, before we proceed into the public hearing portion, I'll just remind council and the public that this is, to introduce this ordinance, it would not be finalized tonight, even if it is approved, it would be a first introduction. But without other questions of staff regarding the staff report or elements therein, Councilmember Mueller?
Under the permitted uses, you're suggesting that these be approved by ministerial staff action. I am confused about including Number 22. If you do this by ministerial action, how will you know what other uses the council could deem similar in kind?
Well, we may come before the council and at a later date for a use not identified on this list to seek permission, I suppose, of that it would be a use acceptable to appear on this list.
Okay, that's my only question. Thanks.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. So, just so I understand, when we say permitted uses and approved without public hearing and conditional, I'm assuming without a conditional use permit, and as you indicated, this is changing really the nature of how all, at least in RSC, how all businesses go through the application of the permit process today. Is that correct?
For the ones on the list, they appear on this list mainly because staff, in staff's opinion, they're the types of businesses that typically don't result in negative impacts to surrounding properties by virtue of their hours of operation, their staffing levels, their traffic generation. They would receive a use permit, but it would be issued by staff, and we would define what those hours and staffing levels are.
So those conditions would be set out by staff, but they wouldn't necessarily need to come before the council for formal approval?
That's correct.
Okay.
And as noted in the staff report, when someone comes in to apply for one of these uses, staff will vet, if you will, that they are within the category, that are within the parameters envisioned by that category, because there's all kinds of possibilities that people have, how they want to run their business, that may leak outside of this and get into an area that we would bring them before the council. It would be, say, a florist shop plus some unknown, whatever that unknown may put them in the category.
Define your hobby.
They need a use permit from the council.
Understood.
And I also think, staff chewed around because council asked us, how might we incentivize or encourage certain things? And we, as you know, in some of our workshops, we wrestled with some of those ideas, and we came on this strategy because in many communities, permitted uses, you know, I don't want to say that it's a fairly standard planning and land use term in all honesty. It's unique to have a community like ours. But actually, this is one of the things that a business person is looking for. They're looking for timing, certainty, and understanding, and having everything go ultimately perhaps through a ZDRB and through the Town Council doesn't that, especially for something pretty basic. If somebody says, "I just want to open and run a fairly straightforward retail operation." And Bob's also, I think, articulated, we know a lot of people in our community are very creative and talented, and sometimes what they bring to us may not always be where they want to go, so we put some caveats because the plus, you know, plus isn't going to work. You've got to be what you are, and we're going to have narrative, and we're going to have something. But we do think this might be worth trying because, you know, we would appreciate your feedback as to what's on the permitted list, to think if it falls in what I would call that generally safe and acceptable range that you all have a comfort, and we think it might be worthwhile to try.
And so just following on, because you touched on a point that I made note of, this would then exclude any review by ZDRB for those items, assuming we agreed with this, that those under the permitted uses would be exempt from ZDRB review?
Yes. And except, note in the ordinance, it states if there's construction to be done, an alteration, and an addition, all of those are still subject to design review and ZDRB review, council review.
Okay.
It's the use itself, and I do want to comment that there's already existing a process that once a use is approved right now by council, and a subsequent use comes along that's essentially and substantially the same in intensity: hours, what's being done on the property, amount of traffic. They don't have to come back before the council. There is already an administrative process that we can approve that use at a staff level. So it's somewhat on the books a little bit, once it's already approved by council and established, then as long as subsequent uses are similar...
Grandfather. Basically grandfather.
Yes.
In some way. Okay. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, please. I want to know by what criteria you chose conditional uses rather than permitted uses, for example, for small bakeries or food stores or art galleries and...
Those...
How did, and what did you base that?
Those came out of the, if you go to page one of the staff report, it does list the new language for RSC uses, and we took those out of that existing language and made them remain conditional uses. Some of them, of course, wine shops, food stores, wine tasting rooms, limited-service restaurant, those were all uses that I think, in staff's opinion, the council wanted to remain informed of and in control of. If you have a different opinion on that, that's, all of these are open to adjustment.
As opposed to a bookstore or a barber shop? You know, I just don't quite understand that, you know, permitted uses, which could be approved without coming before us, you know, might already exist in this town, but conditional uses have to come before us. I guess I'm just trying to get a grasp on why, if someone wanted to open a small bakery in town, is it because there's another bakery in town, or what is the deal?
I think the answer there, Councilmember Dornbecker, is that's consistent with the past policy direction given by the council, that because of odors, impact, hours of operation, parking, this category here, and I think I want to echo what Planning Director has said, have historically been treated by the town as needing to have conditions, and the council wants to make sure they understand what they're getting. And typically, there's much more involved with those operations than what we've tried to use under the permitted. And it has, you know, it has nothing to do with limiting the fact that there's one or two, because in many cases in those categories, there are more than one of each. And again, it's again trying to be respectful of the council, saying, how might you encourage some of these other uses, such as the bookstore, a pharmacy, you know, it just doesn't guarantee that we're going to get any of them, but most of these are going to, you know, they would potentially, if a space came open for rent in an existing building, that's the best way to use this comparison, then they could come in, and a fabric store, you know, if a fancy fabric store wanted to come in and a retail space that opened up, they'd come in, fill out an application and a permit, outline their narrative so staff had an ability to evaluate and make sure when we went and visited that that business was indeed operating in the manner that which they said. That's what we're talking about there. And I do want to clarify, don't confuse the use of the business with the building the business is in. The building, if somebody has to build a new building or they remodel the building, that still needs to come before the normal ZDRB and council process. It's only the fact that I could put a hobby store, or I could put a hardware store in that environment, that would go through the, what we're recommending is the administrative use permit rather than a conditional use permit.
And one thing, if you would notice on that list, all of those uses, except maybe the art gallery and some of the service-oriented are, they're dealing with food or wine, alcohol. And there's been concern, I think, in the past of something starting out with food, and then it creeps into a restaurant-like use or, and I think that's been the wish of the council to get a good definition of what those are to begin with and make sure they stay that. to get a good definition of what those are to begin with and make sure they stay that.
I see. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, any questions?
Yes. First question is a little bit higher level. When I read through the ordinance, I would assume there's sort of a clause that would say, if it's not covered, then it requires a conditional use permit. Does it say that, or is that the intent? I mean, how, somebody, as we talk about creativity, somebody comes with something that's not on this list, doesn't quite fit into a food store, for example, is there just sort of a default position somewhere that we're leaving in there that would automatically go as a conditional use unless you came to us?
I think we can make that. I think that's a, if that's the council's input, I think that's a reasonably intelligent idea to add to make sure that we can put that in.
Okay.
Well, and we'll have the council speak to that issue after we get through the public hearing.
And that probably gets back to the earlier comment you made, perhaps that other uses deemed by the town council be similar in kind. You may assign that to staff as well for that list to make a determination that they are similar in kind to the types of uses that appear on the permitted uses list.
Okay. Let me ask just a couple more questions. Under permitted uses, you have a variety shop, which I wrote down was kind of a vague term. I'm not sure. You've got food store as a conditional use, and variety shop means trinkets, or I'm not sure what it means.
I think I had in mind variety store, like a Woolworths, kind of a store.
You know, they're bankrupt, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Rexall.
Okay.
Five and dime.
Okay. I just, I don't know if we need more clarification. Somebody doesn't be very creative and say, well, I'm selling a variety of goods. I agree that conditional uses should stay with the food, certainly the wine. The list, I like the list you have there. The one that sticks out to me is number seven under permitted uses, which is confectionery shop. Why, that's a, that is a food or, you know, it could be a wood house, or it could be like the new Collar Chocolates where they're making chocolate on site. Why is that one food item? Do you have a rationale for why you did that, or?
Not really. It was more of a seen as a, like a seize candy store kind of a thing.
It could be that you treat that as confectionery shop, non-prepared. Have you been, in some cases, there's people that have, they opened up a candy shop, and it's just a display of, you know, hundreds of different candies. There happens to be a shop in Calistoga that some of you or your kids may have been in. They don't prepare anything. So I think to help, since Bob talked about food kind of, and food and wine kind of governing us, maybe including variety shop brackets, non-food related, so that you can't sneak a bunch of food in. And maybe under confectionery shop, we put non-production of food.
And then that would default back to conditional use permit?
I mean, it's for your consideration.
It's an idea. Okay.
It's for your consideration, but that might help, you know, in the, and again, as Bob indicated, you may have some thoughts about striking something or adding something to this list.
Number 12 and number 15, interior decorating shop and opticians and optometrist shop. I assume that, I mean, interior decorating shop, you mean like a home accessories kind of store? I mean, what I don't want to have is somebody who's a interior decorator put a couple of things out front. And are you sure the word shop or store is sufficient to mean open for retail business? I think you're talking about a retail outlet, is what I assume you mean.
But most of those shops are, do combo, or it's a combination of, they do consulting, and then they have samples in the shop or products in the shop for sale.
Okay. And then my last one, number 21, clothing store. It says limited to the sale of new clothing and other than souvenir clothing. So does that mean that if you want to sell Yountville shirts, that you then?
Well, I-
A, you could not do that, or that would flip back to a conditional use permit?
There are, I worked for many years in the Monterey Peninsula, and that was the bane of cities on, the sweatshirt shops and t-shirt shops. That's all they had, was that. And that's what I was trying to get at here, that it's a bona fide clothing store rather than a t-shirt shop.
So that would then flip back to a conditional use permit?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
There'd also, I think, be the potential if staff was to review and they put a business plan together, and, you know, they had one or two items that said Yountville, and there were 38 others. I think staff might say, this passes the litmus test. But if you're just opening up a ticky tacky souvenir shop, no.
And the same, you know, getting back, I didn't get my comment on the, when they were talking about food in the variety store shop. If they sell a candy bar, that's a typical product you would find in one of those stores. So I think that would still make them eligible if they had candy or-
Right. I just can't think of what a, I can't think in the modern world without using old-world examples of what kind of store would actually come. I just want to make sure somebody doesn't try to exploit that. And I know the staff can sniff that out, but that was my only question about that.
Yeah, you had a question about optometry?
No, it was, it was related. So you answered-
Thank you. I shared the Vice Mayor's concern about variety shop. I don't think that's clearly defined at all, and I certainly wouldn't want to call it a five and dime because five and nickel and a dime don't get you anything. So I definitely think that we need to have better, some kind of descriptive term there because it is very broad in its context right now. And I'm a little unclear also on item seven, confectionery shop. Again, maybe the language being no onsite production. I know we do have some similar language in terms of the food service businesses or wine tasting where they cannot have onsite production of food. That might be relatively consistent language then. But before I go down to a couple more things on the permitted list, similar to Councilmember Doran Becker's question, how did you determine the prohibited uses? Some of them I can certainly see as high impact on adjacent to residential.
Yeah.
Was there a clearly defined criteria that you used on some of these? While, you know, the tattoo piercing salon always gets the chuckle, is that really a high impact? Is it, I mean, there are a couple on here that I just question the standard definition of negative impacts in an adjacent to a residential area.
I did go back and listen to the discussion on the tape, our Granicus, and that specific use was mentioned a couple of times, tattoo shops. When it was being talked about a little bit, of what are we going to prohibit, what would be prohibited? And that was brought up. And then I examined typical prohibited uses in other jurisdictions, and they usually linked it up with piercing, and so I put that one on. The marijuana, we've already been over that, and that's already prohibited, so that's, that's an obvious one to add. The rest of them, one through five, are already on the list. And then the tattoo was talked about, adult-oriented businesses, I think went on, seemed very eligible. And then the marijuana, and then tanning salons. There's a lot of, you know, discussion out now about the detrimental health benefits or detrimental health effects of those types of places and our types of businesses. And they seem to be maybe perhaps something the council, I was guessing that maybe that's something you would want on there as well, so that's-
It would appear that we're adding social impact to this list, is kind of what I'm getting at, that there seems to be a category, we're categorizing the social impact as well as the physical site impact. And if the council's fine with that, that's fine, but I was also just curious about how that list was put together. So we can discuss that list as we continue talking about it. That's fine. Getting back to the permitted uses, you call out optician, optometrist, pharmacy, drugstore. What about physician and doctor's office? And I don't know where our current doctor's office technically, if that's in the RSC or not. I would assume it is.
It is. Professional office, number four.
I also think in clarifying, remember, we're focusing on retail, and a lot of this came out of retail diversity in the spirit. Typically, an optometrist and an optician also has a display area where the glasses and the wares in a drugstore and a pharmacy have a broader line of retail support. So in theory, that's where some of that came, whereas a typical doctor's office, we would want that to be in more of an office setting because there isn't a retail presence associated with a doctor's office. It's not that a doctor's office is restricted, it's just it would come in under a conditional use so that we know where it's going to be. And also, some cases, a doctor's office may have different loading factors on their water and chemical, depending on the nature of the treatment facilities. And I'm just saying, that's why we do have a current doctor's office. It is in the RSC. But again, these are the things that we're saying are permitted, and part of this, I remember, I want you to, comes out of the retail diversity discussions where we're wanting to encourage additional retail, which also explains why the art gallery is on your conditional use, because that's also been on your previous conversations about potential for too many, and how do we, so that's just a little background on those.
Well, so I'm unclear about a doctor's office then, because I thought, Bobby, you were just referencing that it falls in a professional office category, but to me, it sounds like Steve was saying that it would be under the non-permitted conditional use.
You're correct. It's under four, professional office, but then it's subject to retail overlay restrictions where we try to have it on the second floor. The difference is, I'm saying, it's typically a pharmacist and a drugstore, you have-
Yeah, okay. As long as that, the retail overlay restriction is what categorizes that as different.
Most of the optometrists are, they're called dispensing optometry stores, meaning they sell the glasses there that you can, like a glass shop, a Pearl Vision kind of a place where it is, there's a retail component to it.
Okay. And drugstore and variety shop, you see those as different? You have pharmacy, drugstore on 16, and you have variety shop. And I think they are different, but until we figure out what variety shop means, I don't know if we need a whole separate definition for that. If you're talking about sundries, or maybe that can be categorized together, I'm not sure. And maybe in our discussion, it'll come to light. So I'll just highlight that.
Okay.
So if I understand you correctly, Bob, you're, the primary incentive for encouraging the retail diversity through the permitted use is the streamlined process. That's basically the benefit to a business to be in this category of 20-some uses is the streamlined, potentially less expensive process.
Provides a certainty to the applicant that they will be approved if they come in under a typical, whatever the typical is, but in terms of hours and perimeters of operation, that they are going to be guaranteed that they will be allowed to establish that business.
Okay. And one last question. I want to pose this idea of language. Would you recommend, or what are your thoughts about having mandatory review language for this list of permitted uses? Because the council doesn't see any of these business uses potentially when they go in, what do you think about having a automatic six-month review, for example, or one-year review? Or does that defeat the purpose of streamlining?
The first line of defense on that would be the 10-day notice of pending action is distributed to council and ZDRB and the public, really. It's posted at all of our typical public hearing notice places. And were the council concerned, or any council member concerned about that use going in? They have, they're, be eligible to be called up by the council for review.
That's also, though, assuming prior to the business opening, what the impact's going to be. So I guess what I'm wondering is, should there be language in place that if the council feels like, well, you know, staff, I think, may have overstepped on that approval based on the impact it's now having on the neighborhood, should we have an automatic review in place? Or what would the option be to review?
That's an idea to, it's a typical condition, though, that's applied to uses where there's some uncertainty as to how their special events are going to play out, how their traffic impacts are going to play out. And what we're trying to do with this list is to say, okay, this is a list of identified uses that we're confident they're low-impact.
Let me just give you a hypothetical. If a drugstore came to town but said, we wanted to have, we wanted to be a 24/7 drugstore, staff's going to say, that needs to come to council because that's not within the normal parameters of a business operation in this community.
Well, but, all right, I'll throw another hypothetical. You have a furniture store, and we are told before they open that they will not have any large trucks delivering furniture or dropping off furniture. And then we find out after, you know, two months, they're blocking the street because they're parking in a red zone to unload furniture. Is there a mechanism that we can then say, yes, you were granted permission?
Okay. I think the key is, remember, they still are required to have a use permit. It's issued administratively. Staff can still write various components in to their administrative use permit, and if they violate their use permit, then they're still subject. So this is not a freebie. There is an administrative permit on file, and if, for example, if the conditions are laid out, A, B, C, D, their hours of operation, and we find out that they're routinely open different, then we can pull their administrative use permit.
If I may jump in, Mr. Mayor, members of the town council. I think what you're looking for is sort of a catch-all provision that in the event that any of these permitted uses exceed what's the intended use vis-à-vis hours, impacts. You know, if you have a shoe store, but it's the Costco of shoe stores that, you know, is trying to be built, I think you're going to want to be able to then take a look and evaluate this. So if what the town council's looking at is some kind of catch-all language that says that while these are permitted uses, if the permitted use deviates from, you know, some kind of normal business hours, whatever we may fashion, then it may fall into the use permit requirement.
And we'll have that discussion, I think. I don't want to belabor this one topic now until after the hearing and the council can discuss further. So I just want to bring that up for question. Are there any other questions of staff before I open the public hearing? With that, I will open the public hearing on this item. If anyone in the public, since we don't really have an applicant to hear from, if anyone would like to speak on this, please step to the podium now in an orderly fashion.
Hi. My name's Felix Flynn. I'm the property owner at 6712 Washington Street, southeast corner of Washington Street in Pedroni. This is very interesting. I'm very pleased that the town is considering the streamlined process. I own a property that could probably best be described as interim use in reality. Even though it's currently zoned residential, it has a history of being zoned commercial and has always sort of wanted to be commercial. But as the north side of Washington Street has undergone its natural morphology or development in the last 10 years, we've sort of have been trying to ascertain what is really the highest and best use of this property. And I thank Steve Rogers for reminding the council and the benefit of us citizens of not confusing the use or the potential use of these 22 categories with the building itself. And having said that, I think it's very encouraging that, to quote Bob, the benefit is the streamlined process or more certain process by which a proposed business can say, okay, well, it makes it a little bit more open to come in front of the town, a little more, pardon me, certain. Or by being, by the town coming forward and saying, okay, we're definitely prohibited. We're definitely not going to do this. Conditional, we'll consider this. And then finally, with the third category again being the permitted uses. And again, I share the mayor's curiosity about what exactly variety shop may entertain or may not. You know, it's very broad, and I found that I had, certain things came to mind that were- You know, it's very broad, and I found that I had, certain things came to mind that weren't presented here, but I grew up in San Francisco where there were all types of variety shops and on commercial strips and everything from, you know, the would-be souvenir shop to the 7-Eleven or the 7-Eleven wannabe. I'll just wrap it up by saying that there are some very interesting categories in here that I think would add a lot of enrichment to the town of Yountville, i.e. music store, stationary supply store, interior decorator, and as well with the, I endorse in principle the things such as having a real estate office contained to the first-floor location. These are good, common sense thoughts in terms of orientation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Donna Heine, Gateway Estates. I love it. I've been sitting over there throwing out a few comments back and forth about some of these prohibitive things, and I have to tell you, I'm so disappointed. I still have to go to Napa to get my pornographic birthday cards, et cetera. So, you know, you really disappointed me on that one, but anyway, I'm sorry. I had to throw that in simply because I didn't, I didn't know how to get around it. I think it's a very interesting use, usage list. I think it's very nice that if some of the merchants in town, we have had bookstores, we've had stationary stores, and unfortunately, some of the merchants decided they wanted their space for other uses. So, I hope this can be disseminated among the merchants. I also, this is probably, excuse me, I need a little clarification because I'm just slightly confused. This is all new usage, and I remember reading in the Yountville Sun this past week of the change in the usage at ad hoc, making it, allowing for a barbecue takeout window. And there was a bit of clarification that this didn't fall under some of the existing or it didn't have to come before the ZDRB or the board because there were certain things and nobody, nobody called or complained or anything. Well, I didn't know about it in the second place, but how does that fall into this? Or does it? Because there's, for me, a little bit of confusion as to when a designated use has been approved and then we change it after it has been, and this is not the first time in that particular location. So, I'm a little sensitive to that, and you know, I'm very sensitive anyway, so. But that was my, that was my confusion, and thank you very much, and I'm really sorry I have to continue to go to Napa for cards. You're just going to break me off.
Thank you, Donna. We'll talk after the meeting about online.
Thank you.
Purchasing of anything you need. And we'll answer your question after we hear any other questions from the public. We'll ask staff to respond to that particular issue. Any other members of the public like to comment on this? Very well. Then I will close the public hearing and return the conversation back to the dais and invite discussion and potential action.
Would you like the answers to the question?
Yes, please.
All right.
An extension of the dais.
Two answers for you. One, if that was a brand-new use that she was describing, it would be a conditional use, and it would come before you through the traditional conditional use. More specific to the existing ad hoc situation is that the parent use permit issued for the wine garden allowed for the takeout in the back, and that permit was already issued. And ad hoc was operating when they assumed a property, they were, they assumed that conditional use permit. They chose not to use that opportunity. Again, the, a property owner may have a permit that allows for a number of things, and they don't necessarily always utilize all of the, you know, their hours may allow them to go longer and they choose to open shorter. In this particular case, that happens, apparently I have a weak mic, and apparently in this particular case, that use, and they came in and chose to activate what was already an existing use on the site.
Thank you. I think that was the only question that was presented. Thank you. So, with that, Councilmember Dornbecker, would you like to make your comments?
Well, I think that this is very helpful. I'd like to know how we plan to promote to different businesses the fact that we will have a streamlined process for businesses that are approved at staff level. But I'm also curious as to how many of the businesses in these categories are knocking at our doors right now, asking for permits, use permits? And I feel personally a little uncomfortable, although I understand the, I understand the reasoning behind it with the mayor's comments about our social engineering from the dais here. But I certainly don't want to have the tattoo or piercing parlor next in our town, but it does seem uncomfortable to me that we, and a tanning salon, I don't know, that when a woman goes to a beauty shop, they use all kinds of chemicals on her, too. So, it's sort of arbitrary in that sense. So, I don't know. I think it, it's an excellent start. I don't, I don't see how it can be carved in stone, but nonetheless, it's an excellent start, and I applaud the, you know, the staff for taking this on because it's not, certainly not easy to determine which businesses, I mean, it's easy to determine which ones we want and which ones we don't, but it's not easy to make that a reality. We'd love to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hall.
Yes. First of all, I'd just like to say, in general, I think, you know, at least laying out parameters and giving the option, other uses deemed by the town council, and similar in kind, does give or provide some leeway that if it's determined that's something that needs to go before and have an actual use assigned or conditionally approved by the council, that will have that flexibility. I do agree that, you know, the process here, making it simpler, reducing the initiation or the startup costs for a business that wants to have a use that would be acceptable or amenable to town, the residents of the town certainly is a good first step forward. I didn't, I won't comment on how many of these businesses I was, I saw were actually applying for these types of permits, but the reality is, making any of these steps easier for businesses that want to come into town is the right approach. I also want to, again, echo the comments that were stutey identified by the mayor that we need to, I believe, have at least some option or ability should the use that's brought to the town, that's approved by staff, if it goes outside of or is not necessarily administered the way we would have expected, that we'd have the option to review it within some time. And that would be after the business had started, not the 10-day, you know, holding period that we all have to opine and say, "Not in my backyard." And lastly, I believe also that the vice mayor made a comment that we need to be careful having businesses come in and not have at least a default or a defined catch-all language for any that came in. I think the town attorney also made the same, similar comment, that this really is a good way for us to make it easier for applicants to come into town, to apply for a permit, and not have to go through the bureaucratic process of coming before the council and getting all the Ts crossed and Is dotted. We'll bring in the card saloon at some point in time for Ms. Heine. But the reality is, anything we can do to unbureaucratize the manner of which people go in and get a permit to do businesses that are, again, within a recognized list of uses not to be outside of that or not to be too far a scant from what we're suggesting here, I think is a good idea.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
I, anything that we can do to encourage the list of 21 items, I'm all for. I mean, I'm still really don't, I think we need to flesh it out a little bit more. There, I think there was a lot of discussion about what about this and what about that, and I certainly, my biggest item is if you administer, if you ministerially approve something, how are you going to, how can you read our minds, other uses deemed by the council to be similar in kind? I just don't think that belongs because I don't know how you can figure out what we're thinking. You know, and also, I mean, there's lots of other stuff, too. I think you need some kind of, I mean, there's antique stores, pet stores, cell phone stores. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that, who would have even thought our town fathers, when they put lists together, you know, 10 years ago, that we'd have cell phone stores or something? So, we're going to have to have some way of dealing with that, and I don't think the variety shop is quite the way to do it, although I think the variety shop is probably going to be the best way. If somebody sells a few of the, all these things in one store, the most way to make money, but, so, I do think, you know, having certainty to the applicant is important. You know, maybe you could even think of ways to expedite the review. I don't, I have no idea if somebody comes in, if I come in and say, "Okay, I want to have a floor shop," how long does that take? Does that take two weeks or, you know, without council review, or does that take you guys months? I really don't have any idea. So, I think that, I need a little more information just in terms of, and I know each applicant's probably case by case and a little bit different, but my general opinion is, anything that we can expedite for this list and other things that could be on the list, I think, would be very useful. But I also feel that, I think I really liked Councilmember Hall's idea because I didn't have a way to figure it out, giving us some idea besides, you know, the 10-day permit. I know our public likes to come and have a say about what we're thinking about, and, you know, the gas station brought out a lot of people who are all for it. So, some mechanism besides, you know, the 10-day review that people would know about it, I think that that's going to be an important part of this process, too, if you can give that some thought and figure out a way to do that. Because, you know, I do think in any of these new stores, if we could get something on this list that we, that never really comes, people like to come and have their say and talk about it, but I don't think we have to, you know, waste the applicant's time if they really want to come and bring us something that we've been wanting for a long time. So, if you can kind of figure out some of those parameters, I would be fine, although I still don't want any more wine tasting rooms.
On that topic, I really, I think we would need the council to help us because...
I'm going to bring that up after we hear from the vice mayor, and we have, I have three things written down that we need to circle back on, and defining a variety shop is one of them. If we want to add language that's like a default for non-listed items, I'm going to ask that we discuss that, and also if we want to add a period of council review for review of any misintended impacts on a, on a new business. So, I think that will cover some of what we need, the direction we need to give staff. So, Vice Mayor.
First of all, I'd just like to say, I think this is a great idea. I totally agree with Councilmember Hall. Less bureaucracy is better. We overregulate so much things in the modern world, it's just ridiculous. So, anything that we can do, we could come up with a longer list, but at least it's a start, I think, as Councilor Dornbecker said. And we've got some things on here. If there's other things to add in the future, we could add them. To be specific, I'd certainly support the catch-all default that I talked about earlier. I support the concept of the six-month review, even if that's done by, you know, initially done by staff and it needs to come to the council, that's fine. You know, it would become obvious. I, personally, I agree with Councilor Dornbecker about social engineering in general. I would strike item six under prohibited uses and item nine under prohibited uses. I also think that a variety shop under permitted uses is an antiquated term. It's almost as antiquated as a music store, but not yet, give it another couple of years. I would strike just the, let's get rid of the variety shop. It's too confusing. You know, my kids would have no idea what that means and never will. And under confectionery shop, I would add non-production, and I would strike altogether item number 22. The other uses deemed by the town council will be similar in kind, and simply say, if we're going to update it, we can update it, and if not, we have our default clause that takes us back to a conditional use. Those are my specific comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. I will make a couple of comments on the items I would add to the prohibited uses list, full-service winery, unless that doesn't, I don't think, fall under wine tasting bar. And I would not have thought that we would have needed to add that to the list, other than that happened, for this zone in particular.
You mean production? We don't...
Full-service winery facility.
Winery production.
Winery production facility. I understand the, well, we can, we'll have to discuss some of the proposed deletions from the list. Also, I would also recommend on item 12 of the permitted uses, instead of interior decorating shop, which I think is a little misleading, it can almost sound like you're manufacturing goods there, that if we called it interior design services, if that's what we're talking about, if it's more an interior designer, or if we're talking about somebody that could actually be manufacturing product, and that, I guess, for council's discussion. So, I think we're, we have some unfinished business here before we try to vote on this. First, let's just tackle variety shop. Is the council in agreement to eliminate that category?
Well, maybe, I think we all know what the old term of variety store is, and I think we probably all agree that's not going to happen, but in talking to National Main Street, these are actually in small towns, some of the stores that are most successful, they are combinations of things. Like on one wall, they might have hardware, you know, like Steve's hardware, and another wall, they might have jeans or something like that. So, somebody could possibly come in and have a combination of some of these items, and that would be fine with me. If that's a variety store, maybe it's a new, modern variety store, but a combination of these things in one store is fine with me.
Well, what I'm hearing from the council, and it happens to be my opinion, the variety shop definition is completely ambiguous because it can be a variety of absolutely anything. It could be a variety of weapons. Frankly, we have no idea what variety means, and actually, there might be another one that we need to add to that.
A thought for the council.
I've got a second of a minute.
I have a thought that might, you know, strike variety shop, and I hate to say it because, you know, you notice you didn't, we didn't put video rental stores because those will be gone before we know it by the end of the month. How about a general merchandise retail outlet, comma, non-food focused?
I would not put the word outlet in there only because that connotes high volume. That's just for me personally, but...
General merchandise retail, non-food...
Non-food or wine-related?
Non-food or wine-related.
It's going to sound like we're nitpicking this, but we have been given lists that we're supposed to either approve, modify, or reject, so we do need to...
No, we're asking for this, staff. It's not, this is, we're helping you, that's why I'm saying, we're based on your feedback. We'll go through.
You know, if someone wants to sell candy in that store, general merchandise...
We've covered that, we've covered that line item, I think. Let's move on to candy store, speaking of it. I would support the vice mayor's recommendation of non-on-site production. Is that basically the definition?
That's what I put, yeah.
Is a confection store, though, an ice cream store? And what if they're making local ice cream?
Well, it has to be local if they're making it.
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, if we want to nitpick...
Well, what does confection mean? I think of that as chocolate or something.
Candy.
Let's, let's do an ice cream store as a separate line item.
Fine.
If specifically, I'm sorry, we're not having a whole discussion for the entire room, sorry. But if we want to define ice cream as a separate entity, gelato, ice cream, something like that, or if we want it to stay on the, that can be a conditional use because it is a food production item.
Food production.
Excuse me, though, to our residents' comment, it is my understanding that the confectionery store, the candy store in the marketplace is hand-dipping their own chocolates and making, so there is production there.
That's fine, but we're talking about the residential-scale commercial zone, so that use, we're talking about defining it as not being allowed in this area.
I see.
That would be in a commercial area that would be treated differently.
Or it could be permitted.
Yes.
It could be a conditional use. It could be a conditional use.
Right, but we are right now talking about permitted uses that would be administratively approved or denied. So, I think we're, are we in agreement that we're modifying confectionery shops to include non-onsite production? And that if it's, do we wanna include any kind of ice cream, gelato, or any food production item has to be in conditional use along with the other food items?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
That seems to be general agreement there. Does the council have an opinion about item 12, to change shop to design services, or is shop adequate in everyone else's mind?
Well, that proposal unfortunately makes it, my concern was, is it would just be an office, that somebody would come and visit, as opposed to a store where there's items for sale, 'cause it's a retail, I think this needs to be a retail shop. So, services, to me, would mean they don't even have to have anything for sale, retail.
Okay.
So, I...
If the majority of the council is comfortable with the language, we can leave it as is.
Again, I'm just in a creative mood, so in listening to some of your thoughts, it could be that you rephrase that, interior design services with a retail component.
Or just call it a shop, then.
[laughing]
Really, I mean...
No, I think you bring up a good point. A designer could have just the office, but the intent was the designer has an office, and there's some elements that are available for retail that are in illustration and samples, so that it's not just an office. And again, this comes back to, again, coming from the retail diversity. So, I'm just saying, having the retail component stresses that, so if you were to walk in and you liked the lamp, you could walk out with it, and you wouldn't necessarily need to pay for the design services.
Is council comfortable with Town Manager's recommendation on that language?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you for your creative suggestion. There seems to be some discrepancy on item 22, about including or excluding the general uses deemed appropriate by the town council.
It just, in a way, there's some other way to say that, but it doesn't belong in a list of permitted uses.
Well, it's, it's at the last of each of these lists. So, basically, I think what the staff's intent is to make this an open-ended list, because if it's not on this list, we aren't excluding it, we just haven't determined it appropriate to be on this list yet. So, as a note, I put down lists are always inclusive and exclusive at the same time. So, I'll open, I'll open our discussion to the staff clarification here.
Two suggestions, maybe, that we would, the council part of it would be, if we were prepared to issue a notice of pending action, we would, at the next possible opportunity, bring it to the council's attention, that this is, this is coming, being issued, and get a conscious buy-in, that that, whatever it is, is consistent with the type of use that should be on this list. Or, alternatively, it could just be other uses deemed by staff, and we would report that to you otherwise.
So, what I'm gonna suggest is, the language that has been discussed already may be that for each of these lists, which is the default language for items not listed. We've already had that recommendation, and I think that might cover it. Vice Mayor?
Arnold, I'm gonna ask you a question. Your explanation there of number 22, other uses deemed by the town council will be similar in kind, maybe the general merchandise store would fall under this, but would this provision conceivably allow town staff to come to us and say, "It's not really listed here explicitly, but we think you meant that when you said a general merchandise store," as opposed to having to go through two readings of an ordinance to put that in, et cetera, et cetera? Is that, would that achieve that goal of expediency, or is that not really, would that work?
It, it would work. Oftentimes, I see this language to be other uses deemed to be deemed by the town staff.
Okay.
To be similar in kind. So, it is a staff call, but certainly if staff was not comfortable in making that call, they could always bring it to the town council. So, if you're looking for the quickest way to get resolution for an applicant, you vest that authority into staff, and then, you know, if staff just isn't sure that they're on the right page, then they could bring it to the town council.
And could I bring one thing up that, you know, we could, this list could be 44 items. It's, one thing I thought about in doing this is to take it at a more, a level of intensity description of that the business is not remain open past 6:00 PM, they don't have more than three employees, they don't have deliveries more than X times a week. And then, try to corral it into the intensity of the use, and if it falls generally within those operational parameters, then it would be okay, rather than trying to identify every individual use. That, and I don't mean to head the discussion in a new direction here, but it's, it's the, there's gonna be uses that aren't, we haven't identified. And I think the idea is that they fall within some operational characteristics that would be acceptable as these are.
Yes. And I do wanna try to refocus the discussion to the council, and let's get to prohibited uses. There seem to be a very comfortable acceptance of conditional uses, unless we're striking number nine, 'cause if we're striking it on permitted uses, it looks like we're potentially striking it in each of these three instances. But, if there's acceptance to add a full-service production winery to this prohibited list, then we need to discuss items six and nine, if they should remain on this list, or if either or both should be removed. So, specifically on those three items, the addition of the production winery facility and item six and nine. If Councilmember Mueller, you would speak to those three specifically?
Well, in terms of the winery production, I always, I would put that under, and we have definitions, for commercial operations. This is commercial. So, wouldn't that just, if we just put commercial, we don't want any commercial activity. We don't want another gas refinery like we had, or wineries in town. So, we already have that language.
You're, you're mixing, that's actually an industrial or a manufacturing, in terms of that, a production facility. Commercial, most, you know, a restaurant, retail's actually commercial.
I think I stand corrected. I do mean that, yeah, manufacturing. So, if we have production or manufacturing, that would catch a lot of things with one word. So...
Full-service winery production facility.
If we want, say, full, the wine, a wine production facility in addition to production and industrial, I'm fine with that. But, I think we should ban industrial, if it's not already banned.
And it, is the language in place, that anything, any industrial or manufacturing business is already prohibited?
It's not on the prohibited, expressly prohibited list, but it, and it can be, that, you know, that the whole category, heavy, commercial, manufacturing, what we've been talking about, we can add it to the list, and that'd be clear enough?
So, revising the winery component at all to say, heavy manufacturing?
And, yeah, manufacturing, production facilities, they would just not be allowed in...
Heavy industry? I mean, I'm just trying to find a phrase. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Well, a bakery is a manufacturing facility. It's just a light manufacturing facility. So, I think that there could be a disagreement of whether a winery is light production or heavy production. Personally, I would just put in winery production facility and, because I don't wanna exclude somebody necessarily from doing a bakery or making chocolate or whatever. Let's just go for the one thing we know. I don't think a refinery's coming to town.
Okay, so, back to winery production facility, potentially being added to the, to the prohibited list.
And industrial, can we add industrial?
I don't see...
That's not bakery?
I don't, I don't see the consensus on industrial, nor I think the need, since if it's not already implied as a prohibited use, it's certainly... Bob, is industrial use by definition excluded, or not?
It is not specifically called out. Of course, be aware, we're, we're in a zone that's next to residential, and that, that's kinda the guiding principle, is compatible with residential, so...
Heavy industry, would that be a category to include?
We could. I think it's not specifically listed, because there's other guiding principles that would, someone would never think of locating that if they read what RSC is all about.
Okay. Let's, go ahead, Councilmember Dornbecker.
So, does that mean that it would be sort of...
Unnecessary.
Unnecessary?
I would think, yeah.
Let's, let's speak to items six and nine. Councilmember Mueller, are you...
I, I think they have health issues, so I would keep them on the list.
Councilmember Hall, to speak to the winery production facility...
I'm okay with winery production facility being added to prohibited uses. I believe, and I'm probably gonna be counter to my peers, that items number six and nine should move to the conditional uses. I mean, it doesn't preclude us from disallowing those uses in those areas, but I personally, we'll talk about whether or not I have tattoos, but I did have my ears pierced in high school, and I don't know why, you know, my five or six-year-old daughter might not wanna get those pierced, if there was such an option in this town. But, or else I'll do it with ice and a sharp needle. So, those two, I think should move to the conditional uses.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker, to those three items in particular?
Well, having a daughter who has number six, both cases, I guess I'm, you know, and she's very healthy. Six and nine, I think, should move to conditional.
And you've already stated the winery production facility you would put on the prohibited list?
Yes, winery production facility.
Vice Mayor?
I support winery production facility, and I am fine with moving six and nine down to conditional use.
And I'll ask for clarification from Town Attorney. Do we run into legal problems if we were to put items on a conditional use that might be prohibited based on health? Or, could we, are those defensible as conditional uses?
Those are defensible as conditional uses. There may be other laws, state laws, that may govern how they operate, but the determination of whether or not they get to operate in town, and conditions that may be reasonably imposed under the laws that are afforded to localities, you could certainly put them under a conditional use provision.
Okay, very good. So, I will agree with the winery production facility being on the prohibited list, and I would be fine if we moved items six and nine to the conditional uses. Now, I'm trying to remember if we have any other outstanding categories, are there, generally speaking, any other categories the council would like to see on any of these lists, realizing that we're not gonna get everything.
Well, excuse me.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
I was thinking that it probably would be a good idea for a general merchandise store to be on the conditional use. You know, the conditions being, what are the merchandise that they're, you know, if they're dry goods, I think that's another old-fashioned term, but dry goods is sort of something that's already made. I don't know. There's something about just saying a general merchandise store is welcome, and, and, I, I don't know. I don't feel quite comfortable with that, Mayor Dornbecker.
Yes, Councilmember Hall?
If I, if I may, I mean, part, part of what, I believe the essence of what we're trying to accomplish is to expedite. And although, I think there would be issues or op, there may be applications that town staff would identify as being questionable that should come before the town council, but arguably, we're abdicating our responsibility to some extent to expedite the process for the permittee. And that really would be my comment, or my, my following comment to your, you know, maybe we should push this under conditional. The more we push there, the more we're taking on responsibility of approving the permit process, where I believe that the town staff is very capable and/or will bring back to the town council when there's an issue that they don't feel comfortable with. That's my position.
And I would just follow that up with, what I wanna go to next, which is the other language. If we have language in here that allows council review for any unintended impacts and consequences of a administratively-approved use, I think that would potentially cover Councilmember Dornbecker's concern. So, I would now look for comment on default language for both any item not on these lists, and also whether there should be a automatic council review of some period of time. Vice Mayor?
Well, just a quick clarification, Steve and Arnold, on the general merchandise store to exclude wine and food-related items. I assume also if something's in the list, for example, the clothing store with souvenir clothing, that that would trump that? I mean, they can't say, "Well, it's a variety store, I'm including something that's prohibited on the list otherwise," then it would just flip to a conditional use permit?
I would think so. And also, I do wanna point out, again, these folks are gonna have to fill out a fairly detailed application and some stuff. So, yes, I think that, I agree with your interpretation.
Okay.
So, speaking, speaking to adding the language, I know you've already recommended the default language for any items.
Yeah, so I think that, I think that we need to have specific language in here, and the Town Attorney can suggest specific language that says, if there's an item that is not specifically listed on these lists, does not list on these lists, that it defaults to a conditional use permit.
Pretty straightforward.
One of them?
So, you would, is that your replacement to item 22?
Yes.
The last item of each list?
Correct.
Is the rest of council?
Of each list, or just the permitted uses list? Because the...
Tell me how...
Yeah, that's true. You're right. The prohibited list couldn't then default to a conditional use.
Right.
Oh, right.
Prohibited uses is prohibited...
Permitted administrative, permitted use that's administratively-approved would default to conditional use.
But, the question I would have about that is, if a cellphone store came to town, granted, it might only be, maybe it'll be open till 8:00 at night or something, there's only a couple of employees. I mean, some electronics store, I mean, that's, of all the stuff, probably the most likely thing in this day and age where it's gonna come. But then, we're saying that would be a conditional use, 'cause we've decided not to have the, you know, 40 items on the list and keep it at 20. So, that just automatically, I think the language is too harsh to shove something we haven't thought of into a conditional use.
Well, I believe you were recommending that we eliminate the item that said we could administratively-add to this list. Item 22 did exactly that, which was allow staff to say, "Well, cellphone, cellphone store wasn't on this list, but we understand it has the same type of impact, so we'll say okay." But...
No, my issue is that, if this is a ministerial list, how can staff know what other uses would be deemed acceptable by the town council? That's where I'm confused.
They can come ask us.
That's, that's what we intended to do. We would...
And I say, "Come ask us, we can change the ordinance," 'cause right now...
Then that would be fine, if that's how they would deal with that.
Right now, everybody's conditional use, so at least we're giving somebody a streamlined.
I agree.
And there will be other things we haven't thought of, but they just default to what we do right now.
So, if this is a placeholder for things we haven't thought of, and you would come and ask us, then that would all work out. Then we wouldn't have to have this enormous list. So, then we wouldn't have to have anything that's not on the list to default to a conditional use, so...
So, Town Attorney, I think he's going to...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't recall, was there consensus on the general merchandise, non-food and wine-related?
Yes, yes.
So, I think that example would probably be caught into that, yeah, into that category. And if we weren't sure, we'd come back to the town council. So, general merchandise covers a broad spectrum of items.
Stuff.
Yeah.
Stuff.
Stuff that you're buying is displayed on shelves.
It's not souvenir clothing.
And by that definition...
Not wine, not food.
Now, when you, you brought up a question, wine-related, food and wine-related. So, a bottle opener is wine-related. I think, are we talking about wine?
I'm sorry, I said food and wine.
So, food and wine.
Just also remember, we're, we're looking at the broad. So, in other words, if somebody comes in and they have a wine opener amongst 100 items, we're probably not gonna say it's a problem.
But, the language that was just used was related to food and wine, and so I wanted to clarify that, so it didn't, unintended cut something out. So, let's get back to language. You just proposed, again, your language about defaulting the permitted uses to the conditional use list.
Yes.
If they are not...
I would change 22 to say other uses not listed are, you know, require a conditional use permit.
So, I'd like to hear from Councilmember Dornbecker on that specific language, if you support it, or...
I don't really. And the reason is that I would support it if it said, "Other uses deemed by the town council to be similar in kind," when, you know, when Bob just described what he meant was, by that sentence, that they were going to bring things that were not on the list to us, to make that determination. To me, that, that... not on the list to us, to make that determination, to me, that, that resolved that problem for me, because I don't, I, I think I see what he's trying to say is, if it's not on that list, they're going to ask us, is that similar to everything that, and would you be all right with that, which I would.
So if I could propose changing language on number 22 to somehow not make it a requirement to go to the conditional use, but maybe, may fall under conditional use permit, is there a way to craft that language?
Let me try this. Other uses determined by town staff not to be similar in kind shall be required to go through the conditional use process.
Bingo.
Well, so my proposal is may be required, because what we're trying to do is not lump everything back into the conditional use.
No, no, what I've said is, the thing here is, I put one thing, the difference there, Mayor, is that determined by the town staff not to be similar in nature.
And the only thing I would add, Steve, if I may, is or the town council. Because if staff wants to come back to the town council, get your blessing, then you don't have to go to the, to the conditional use process.
So what language are you collectively proposing?
What, what Steve had suggested, with, with the minor addition of as deemed by town staff or the town council. So in other words, if staff feels that it's not contained within this list, staff has two options. One is to come back to the town council, and the town council could say, we agree, it's not really our intent that it was on this list, and therefore they have to apply for a conditional use permit, or they can say, the town council can say, we agree, it's on this list, and please process their application.
It's potentially two-step, but it may only be a one-step.
Correct.
Hypothetically...
Town council, the town staff is comfortable with it, it doesn't go to the town council level.
Correct, let's say under that example.
Okay, that's good. So would that satisfy the vice mayor and Councilmember Dornbecker's concern?
Well, I like that, because it says, other uses deemed by the town staff or town council not to be of similar kind may be, put on the conditional.
Well, they're saying will be.
A will be, will be. That would satisfy me.
Vice Mayor?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we have the language, we're putting a new 22 in, a revised 22. And then the last thing I believe we have to discuss is, do we add a mandatory review component for permitted uses that have not been approved by the town council? Councilmember Mueller, I'll start at your end this time.
Um, it's, we've always really applied that, especially in the recent years, to a lot of businesses. I, I think it just really helps shape a good working relationship with the new business and staff, it's like, you know, hey, you, you know, that A-frame sign, you really can't put that out there, and it gives staff, I think, a good working relationship with the business to put, and they can escalate whatever they need to, to us, but I think it's a good thing.
Councilmember Hall?
I agree. I, I believe it would be good to have that language in there, and I, and I believe the first level of that review should be with the staff, not with the town council. We don't need to be chasing down every new business that wants to come into town.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
I agree with that, with the staff being the first level of that oversight.
Vice Mayor?
Agreed.
Review.
And so the terms, I'll, I'll say this and look to Bob for a nod one way or the other, would 60 days satisfy the council for that review process to get, longer?
Can we have...
Ninety?
Can I...
Yeah, could I ask that, Bob?
Yeah.
What do you think would be appropriate review time? I know sometimes businesses are seasonal and you can't even tell what their impact is.
Well, six months is a typical that we use, and now, be aware that the business is now in their tenant space and they're operating, and they told us how they're going to operate, and we're looking for ways they are operating outside of those parameters. I mean, the implication would be if they were operating the use as a nuisance, we would come at them anyway, no matter, no matter what, if it was six months or not, because we, we want to stop whatever activity is happening outside of how they told us they were going to operate. So, the six-month is good, that it's sort of a checklist that you, you've done what you told us you're going to do, and if there's unanticipated activities going on, we can clean those up, that's an opportunity. But if they're operating outright as a nuisance, we would go at them anyway.
They're already. So, six-month satisfactory to the council? Great, let's do the six-month requirement for automatic review by staff.
And I have to make a suggestion, and I apologize for one additional language addition to the draft ordinance, we need to add a provision that allows for the establishment of administrative use permit, application processing fee as determined, set amount shall be as established in the, in the master fee schedule.
Is the council in agreement that that's...
Yes.
That's good, good language, good addition?
Make sure it's adequate.
So I think, I think that was a very thorough discussion. With that, is there action to introduce the very revised ordinance?
No.
No.
You have two options, Mr. Mayor and members of the town council. One is to direct staff to recraft the ordinance, bring it back for introduction. The other one is to, I think, if everyone's comfortable with, with the proposals, then to introduce tonight, we'd bring it back for second reading at your next meeting, and then it would be, if it's, if it passes, then it would be implemented 30 days thereafter. So you...
And that second option was the one I was just proposing, that this is not an ordinance going into effect, we will see the language as it's been amended, but this will keep us from adding that additional two-week administrative process that we say we don't want.
And if you tweak it or change it after, at second reading, it then goes back to, to first reading.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number...
Introduce.
Introduce, thank you. First reading of 398-11, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Yonville amending the Yonville Municipal Code Title 17, Chapter 17 dot 52 RSC, residential-scale commercial, Chapter 17.80 RO, retail overlay, and Chapter 17.156, use permits to establish categories and identify prohibited, conditional, and permitted use permits, permitted uses for the residential-scale commercial zoning district with the changes that were agreed to by consensus of the council at the direction of, at the agreement of staff. We will waive, waive the rating.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you for the discussion. I know it was very tedious at times and thorough, but I think it's important, we are talking about trying to create brand-new definitions that will help the business community and the residents coexist. And thank you to the public for your input. I hope that by me regulating your input after the public hearing, that we're all okay. Good, now I'll cut you off. So we'll move on to our last public hearing, which is item 11C, another introduction of an ordinance, amending the Yonville Municipal Code Title 17. Basically, it says to amend the methodology for calculation of residential and commercial floor area ratio. I have a staff report.
Thank you. I'm going to try to go right to the changes in the ordinance on this one. This goes back to a, a planning workshop we had in January, and it was more of a presentation with some discussion by council of some ideas by staff to amend the FAR calculation ordinances. And, so, the proposed amendments are to, right now, we measure floor area to the exterior wall of a building in the calculation of FAR. And the suggestion is that we go to center of plate line or center line of wall where there's no plate. And the reason is that those that clad a building in stone, which is a more expensive treatment, or they put in deeper wall cavities for more insulation, feel penalized for doing that because we're measuring to the outside. And it's a small amount, but it, it does limit them on some FAR that they're getting not credited with because we're measuring to the outside rather than another means. So the suggestion is to measure the center line of wall, which is going to allow them, an applicant, to do those treatments. The second one would be to, for commercial districts, to essentially make architectural elements as an exempted class across the board. And this is a confusing one, because it already says that, that architectural elements are an exempted class, and then it goes on in each specific commercial zone district to limit it to 250 square feet. And by architectural elements, I'm referring to balconies, unenclosed porches, breezeways, what are called logias, that are second-floor elements that are open, like balconies. And elsewhere in the ordinance, those types of features are encouraged on commercial buildings because they articulate the facade and make for a more interesting building. And think of, say, for instance, the, the Village of Spa has some of those elements on it. The applicant is less inclined to provide those elements, when they're getting charged against their FAR, they'll put it in the building, and they'll, you'll end up with more of a cube-shaped building than you would with these articulations that are found in these architectural elements. And then it was always a problem of how do you calculate 250 square feet? The, the ordinance really provides no direction, is it per face of building, per, per building, per project? Don't know, it, it was open-ended. So, staff sees these as more appropriately limited in design review rather than, than a hard and fast number, that there's no way to really, at this point, define how it's applied. Plus, I think the benefit would be to the design of the building by allowing those to happen, and we end up with more interesting buildings. So, those would be exempted in commercial buildings. We'd previously discussed the exempting outdoor storage, trash, recycling areas, as long as they're screened, they would not be charged against FAR. Increasing the commercial FAR exemptions to allow some of the exemptions for FAR that are extended to single-family residences, including interior staircases, basement levels, and landscape elements. Now, the basement levels, we really haven't been charging, think of Hotel Lucca, this would really put, put it in the ordinance and recognize it and take away the ambiguity of whether we should or not. So, it would recognize basement levels as defined in the building code, it would exempt on one floor only interior staircases, and landscape elements, which are decks that are under 30 inches off grade, pergolas, gazebo's, those, those types of structures. And then finally, and this is maybe the most radical change of all of them, the idea is when you have, one of the, one of the functions of FAR is that it controls mass of a building, and there are other ways ma, other ordinances control mass by lot coverage, how much of a footprint on the lot, it's a percentage against the lot, we use floor area in the building against the lot. Carmel uses cubic, cubic feet within the building, they calculate how many cubic feet are in a building, and, and they control the volume of the building that way, and, and therefore the mass. Well, we, we use FAR, however, we don't, you could have, you could have a interior space with a cathedral ceiling that was, had a lot of volume in it, but we only count the floor area on the first floor. And what this is suggesting, that when you have an interior portion with a minimum 100 square feet of open area, and the height of that open area is 16 feet or more of clear open space from the floor to the ceiling, it's regarded to have an assumed second floor in there. So we would, we would charge them with an assumed second floor for the purpose of controlling the mass of the building and the volume of the building. And it's, as it is right now, they could, subsequent to the building being constructed, if they were right at their FAR, and they wanted to, subsequent, years later, put a floor in there, we would say, no, you can't do that, and it's a little nonsensical, they already have the mass, why would we limit them from having a floor in there? There's no purpose to it. The purpose we're really trying to achieve is upfront of controlling the mass of the building, and we didn't do that. So that's what the point of this last one is, is to, it's, it's kind of a take-back where the other ones are generally more liberalization of how we calculate FAR. So those are the suggested changes, and I will point out that a lot of these have a relationship to open space, that we will, staff will be bringing back to the council, a discussion of open space in commercial projects at a, at a later time. And if there is a ordinance that's been prepared, and there's no necessary critical deadline on this, and if council wishes to discuss this tonight, and then we come back later or take care of it tonight, but there will be a follow-up discussion related to it on open space.
And when you say take care of it, it's still no more than an introduction to this ordinance?
It is an introduction.
Or we just discuss and continue that introduction?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions of staff right now? Councilmember Hall?
No, I, I don't have any questions, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to the dialogue.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I had one, under discussion, the second set of five items. In the second one, you had outdoor use areas, but then when I looked at the resolution, that seemed to be out. Was that a mistake? Did you want it in, or...
You're on the page three, in the middle of the page?
Page three. No, page two, under discussion, the second group of five items. Under discussion is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and then there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, I'm on the second 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, number two.
And what's your, what's your question?
It says, outdoor use areas, it says, commercial FARS standards penalize outdoor use areas by including trash areas, screen storage, and outdoor use areas as FARS.
Yep.
But in the resolution, it just talks about trash areas and screen storage. So is that a typo, or did you mean it to be in the resolution? Because I don't have any questions.
What this, this, that list of five are some of the issues that lead up to the, the suggested changes. And the issue in this case was that right now, FAR is charged against trash storage areas and screen storage areas, because they're use areas. And the suggested change is we not, we not do that any longer, and we exempt that, that type of storage and trash area and recycling.
So you're only proposing to exempt part of that line item that Councilmember Mueller is referencing?
The trash and screen, but not outdoor use. Because then if you go to the resolution, under item A2, you do talk about trash and storage, you don't talk about outdoor use.
And the reason they are right under the current definition charged as FAR is because they're defined as use areas. And that's, that's the only reason that language is in there, is it's pointing out that they're outdoor use areas and we, and we charge them as FAR.
Right, I think...
And in the discussion we had earlier in January, there was a sentiment on the council to exclude these, and that's the last part of that.
So if I, if I understand your question, I think Councilmember Mueller, you're correct. Where only outdoor uses would continue to be counted as FAR, but we've removed a section related to the trash enclosures and stuff.
Okay, so that sentence just needs to be written differently. And it is in the resolution, so the resolution is correct. Okay.
Yeah, are those your questions for now?
Yeah.
All right, Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. So I, I know, as we're looking at this, and we're, and we're proposing it, Bob, or at least thinking through how we're going to propose it, have we done any analysis around, I guess my first question is, is if we change to this, let's say we assume this ordinance and we change it, are there, is there an expectation that we're going to have re-applications for... for permits because people's FAR is going to change? Have we considered that? And do we know roughly what that means in terms of the FAR for the town?
No, we haven't gone case by case, but I will say that the, the majority of commercial projects are really in excess of their FAR already. And exempting, say, a trash area is not going to free up some new construction for them. Fargo's hand in hand with parking demand.
Yep.
And there's that issue as well to consider. There may be cases where a, a small amount of additional floor area would be possible, but it's not going to be a tremendous, significant amount. And, and as I say, most of the projects are already in excess and they're, this isn't going to free up anything for them.
Right, I'm, I'm just recalling back to recently, a couple of applicants that, you know, were, were showing that they had, you know, certain things they were selling and they fell outside a FAR, those spaces were exempt, and now they're moving to the middle of the wall rather than to the exterior and they're going to have, those things, I, I'm just curious, I wonder if we really know what our impact of changing this might be to the existing, to the existing permits and if people would come back and/or is there a requirement that they come back and reapply? And I, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, they, yeah, they would all have to come back and, you, you mean if they're going to propose construction?
Well, if they were going to come back and say, well, my FAR originally was X and now because of the change in the ordinance, it should be Y and I, you know, I want to do this or the other thing. I want to modify the way my, my business is situated. I'll add seats.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I was speculating, that there probably is not-
You think it's de minimis?
I think it is.
Okay.
There is one area that, and this might be an inducement that would actually help. We've been talking about trying to improve food recycling, composting, and in general, the way we maintain some of our, and the, the comment from most of the restaurants and related businesses was, we can't do what you want us to do because you're going to count it as FAR and we're already either there or we don't have the capacity. So we may find this a positive.
So you're encouraging behavior to some extent?
We are. We also, I tend to agree with Bob. I don't think it's going to free up enough space in most places. However, it would perhaps help in major remodeling of, of something or new design coming forward that we get a more creative and better design.
Great. Questions of staff?
No, not me.
Vice Mayor?
The only question I have is, is about, on your suggested amendments on page three, number, point number five, it says, "Interior portions of buildings with a minimum of 100 square feet, blah, blah, blah." Is that all buildings or is that commercial buildings? Are we talking about commercial zone or does that include houses?
I intended all buildings.
So houses?
It's a mass concern for any building.
Okay.
Yeah.
You were going, you were getting radical, weren't you? Okay. Okay.
And my only question is to that same point, why minimum of 100 square feet of open space?
The thinking there was, and the 16, the feet in height, is that, that's getting at the minimum of when a floor could be put in. And the 100 square feet is, like, minimum room size is typically 70 square feet and it's, it's slightly larger than the minimum room size. So-
So your thought is that anything smaller than that would not have dramatic massing effect?
Right, and typically these, the, the big ceiling areas are in living rooms and areas where it is at least 100 square feet to begin with.
Okay, thank you. So what I will do now is open the public hearing for this introduction of this ordinance and invite any and all members of the public that are here with us to speak to this issue.
Hi, I'll speak directly to Bob. I'm still confused on point number five. I'm thinking of a typical home that may have a, a living room, a great, a great room or something like that, that would certainly be at least 10 by 10, 100 square feet, would be, I don't know how tall this ceiling is, 16 feet?
11.
How many?
11.
This is 11 feet? Okay, so five more feet than that? Wow, okay. That has to be a pretty big, I see what you're saying there. Okay, so that gives me a sense of perspective.
And actually, if I'll just ask you to address us and we'll address the staff.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I didn't understand that.
It's okay.
I'm addressing the council.
Okay.
Okay, so for clarity, interior portions of buildings with a minimum of 100 square feet, 10 by 10 or more of open area and 16 feet or more, and getting the perspective that this is an 11-foot ceiling here, five feet more would be, would certainly be a second story. Of clear, open space from the floor to the ceiling shall be record, regarded as an assumed second floor, pardon me, for the purpose of calculating FAR. Okay, thank you. That was what I needed to have clarified.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. And seeing no other members of the public, I'll close the public hearing and return it for council discussion and potential action. Councilmember Mueller?
I have to admit, I'm still a little confused about the 16 feet or more. So what you're saying here is that, well, maybe I can tell you, your intent for putting this in, you kind of gave a description about a church and then somebody wanting to put another floor in. And we, that would, they would be precluded by that. It just, I, I just don't know why we, still confused about why we're trying to put this in.
Well, the point is, if you have anybody that has built a, a building with a vaulted ceiling by using, continuing to use this example, they would be penalized by enclosed, you know, an interior renovation of that space when it has no exterior impact. So what he's trying to propose is it have the exterior impact when the building is being built. And so the whole point of the FAR restriction is to minimize the massing on a parcel. If the massing's already in place, why, why tell somebody that they can't enclose their vaulted ceiling in their residence and build a playroom for their children when the neighbors can't even see the impact?
No, I, if that's, if that's all buried in there, I agree with that.
Is that a fair assessment of your language?
Yes, but it, we would have counted already against them at the beginning. If this were in place, we would have, if it were 16 feet indeed, we would have said, you really have two stories there and we're going to count it as two stories, although it's open. And then at a later date, they can elect to put that story in or not, but for the purpose of controlling building mass, we're going to count it.
Because the, the massing is already happening, because it's exterior massing, the interior-
Yeah, we don't know if there's a floor in there or not.
Right.
Maybe not, but we're, you, you get the effect of the mass from the street.
Right.
Just to fall-
Yeah, well, actually, if I-
Can I follow up on just one of my statements?
Sure, sure.
So I think what you're referring, I mean, I can think of a couple of houses I won't name. I think Somerston, they have that very high ceiling and a big area that makes that building very square, but it doesn't fall under FAR. And that would be an example.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Not questions, comments, yeah.
And then, I didn't have time to look it up. You talk about architectural features and architectural elements in here. You have those defined in the current ordinance? Because I don't know. Okay, good, then I'm sure that's fine. And then you don't want us to comment on the item 1 through 4 on page 3 regarding open space? Because we only talked about that and I, those are where my, more serious concerns are, opening that up. I really think I understand the interior portion.
And I would recommend that that is its own conversation, if I may.
Yes.
Because I do think that, that is a separate topic from what's being proposed with the FAR-specific calculations.
Okay. So if there's any way to simplify my only final comment, simplify that item 5, because we've all had a lot of discussion on page 3. Otherwise, I'm fine with everything above the open pace, open space discussion.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. In general, I think it's, I think it's interesting, the amendments that are put forward. I mean, I, for one, would be pleased with some additional architectural elements and I don't think we should penalize business owners or individuals for making or enhancing what the town can look like from the exterior. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with all of the items. I think number three, obviously, the encouraging of recycling, food, composting, et cetera, is important. I think the town is taking a proactive effort to do that by giving a break. I think that's a smart approach and hopefully we'll get some more buy-in from some of our, our big commercial businesses here that have that opportunity. The item number 5, I'm not entirely sure that I've digested it, because I saw it one way and I, I think I understand it correctly, that if I had a restaurant, it had 16 feet of square, 16 feet high by at least 100 square feet, I could, in theory, put a cup, put a floor in and put a couple of tables in. I should be penalized for my FAR. Is that, is that ultimately, would that be one direction you could take it?
Well, yeah, and there's a couple of things going on there. More traffic generation, more parking demand when you're doing that.
So, so you're put, you're holding them to a higher standard because they have this mass and potential to put the additional-
Let me try something to help you visualize. You bring, somebody brings to you a 16, or let's just say they bring you a 20-foot building, only single stor, but they're only going to have one floor. They don't put anything in. What this is saying and what Bob's trying to say from a massing standpoint, we're going to treat that as a two-story.
Right.
And, and that's the simplest way, what I'm trying to say. Doesn't, you know, and then Bob's using the example of if they come back later, so I'm saying scrap that, just start with, I'm bringing you a brand-new building, I got this footprint, but because I want it to look big, I want it to have real substance, I'm going to make it be 16 or 18 feet high. Under our current system, if it's only one floor, what Bob is saying is, we're not really regulating the mass very well because we've ended up with what looks like and the average person thinks as a two-story building.
Right.
They've only regulated the first floor.
Yeah, correct. That's the simplest way.
And I, and I get that. So I guess what my comment is, is that if I interpret what you said and all the other items, this is the one takeaway. This is the one where every, everything else you're, we're offering in the amendments, it really is to allow a, some leniency on FAR. Whereas this one is doing the opposite, if this condition exists. And that's what I'm identifying, just clearly as a comment. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, I, I'm glad I finally understand that too, because however, FAR, is FAR only calculated in commercial buildings or in residential buildings?
Well-
So how does that impact a home like mine, which is only one floor, but we have a 20-story, a 20-foot ceiling in the living room? So what, what, is there some impact on that?
What's built is, continues as it is. It would affect primarily on this, number 5, new construction coming in, or if someone were wanting to add on and they already had this situation, we would, we would be counting this.
Aha. Thank you.
So I want to make sure that it's clear, if somebody has an existing residence that has a vaulted two-story and they want to, and they're right at their FAR limit, and they want to add a second floor to that vaulted area, that would put them over their FAR, they would be prohibited from doing that?
Yes.
Is that an exemption?
Okay, is that your understanding? Is that clear?
Well, I thought since you've already charged them with that FAR, assumed that they did have a second story in there, why would there be-
No, that, that's exactly the opposite. The language right now assumes a first floor only.
Aha.
And so what, what he's recommending is that we would, in that very initial calculation, charge the two stories toward the FAR instead of just the one.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
And I will say that any construction of, within the last, well, 10 years at least, they, they tend to go right to their limits. They're already at their FAR limit. There's no surplus they're hanging hell back on. It's, everybody goes to what they can do.
Well, let me ask you this then. Suppose a family came to you and said, you know, we have this vaulted ceiling, but we have another baby and we want to put a, so we just want to put, add a floor up there. And you would, you would disallow that or you would say yes?
We would have, you know, that's come up in Washington Park and there have been some instances there where they actually had enough FAR remaining to put that floor in. The, the living rooms are open in those. And there's been a couple that have come in, a couple of dwellings where they were able to, they've got to change the windows out, so they're operable windows and the ceiling height has to meet the code, but in those instances, they had enough FAR to put that floor in. There may be others that do not.
And under this, would they still have the opportunity to do that?
Yes, if they have FAR capacity to do it.
So I'm going to ask before I have the vice mayor comment, but it seems to go against the philosophy of, an existing building has already been calculated and has already been impacted, however it's going to be impacted, on the exterior. So to penalize somebody to make that change inside after the exterior impact's already established, is that the intent of this? Because what we've been saying is, we're trying to stop it from happening in the first place. But are, is it fair to penalize somebody whose exterior isn't changing?
You've hit on, I think, also to, to help Bob here. Not all vaulted ceilings are sufficient to create that livable space without changing the appearance of the home.
But my point is, if, because you speak to Washington Park, there are homes I know that they have put in second floors. If they were at or over their FAR, they couldn't have done that, but there's virtually no impact to the exterior neighborhood. So I just wonder if this language should be adjusted to include, to exclude existing buildings.
And it, it kind of-
Isn't the potential issue though, that by adding that second floor, you've now created additional parking requirement for that home?
Well, can I jump in on that?
Absolutely. Vice Mayor?
Well, I've written down Washington Park as an example, and I know there's, I know there's also, I know of a house in the neighborhood I live in that did exactly what you're talking about. They completely maxed out their floor ratio, they have a very large, high ceiling. And I can use my own house as an example, it's a little different situation, but we have a very large attic that we will hopefully someday soon put a couple of rooms in, but we could probably put in 500 or 600 more square foot of floor area up there without ever touching the outside of the house. And I've been at ZDRB reviews where they say, you're maxed out and you've got that second floor. And they're like, you know, you've got that vaulted ceiling, we think that in 10 years, when everybody turns over, you're going to come back and say, hey, I'm not, I'm not impacting anybody. And that's what we're trying to avoid. So if somebody previously was approved with a big vaulted ceiling and they maxed out their FAR, then they, they're not allowed to add it now anyway. And if, if that, that, the new rule takes them up to max out their FAR, well, all you're replacing is a floor over empty space and they still get to use it. So I don't, I don't see a scenario where there is a penalty per se. All we're doing is trying to keep people from coming back and saying, I know that 10 years ago I agreed that I would never want to put a second floor in here, but, but now it's not going to affect anybody. And I, that's what we've seen happen before. And I think that's why this makes sense as written, is it keeps people from trying to kind of wiggle around it down the road.
Well, I would disagree with the interpretation, using my neighborhood again as, as a very good example. I know very specifically of families that have had children, that when they bought the home, there wasn't the intended maxing of FAR with the idea that down the road, they're going to take advantage of it and, and build onto it. But when the family circumstance changed, that was a logical, instead of having to move to a different home, they could have zero negative, zero exterior impact and build out that open space. Now, not every model could do that, but it wasn't because of the FIRs, because the ceilings were too vault, you know, too slanted. So I hesitate to, to penalize somebody who's making virtually no exterior modification. Whether their intent was to eventually take advantage of that or not, I thought we were talking about, we definitely want to avoid new construction having the massing of two stories and only being charged for one. But do we want to go back and have that restriction kind of after the fact for somebody who's not changing? No, all bets are off. If the roofline gets modified, if windows are added or any other kind of negative or exterior impact happens, that's, that's a whole different issue. But all they're doing is closing off that interior.
But I guess my, my concern with that is, is that they, in, in this instance, because I know there are some people who have enclosed at Washington Park, they're already maxed out on their FAR, the house was built that way, and then they're essentially coming either to the ZRB or I guess the council and saying, well, we've got a good reason why we want you to waive FAR. And is that what, is that what you're, that's what you're suggesting?
Waving FAR, but maybe making an exception, the exception being there's no exterior impact.
But waving FAR for them?
Yeah.
Right.
I have a-
Which I don't support.
Yeah. Okay. So prior, I know we still need to get back to your general comments, but if you have a follow-up to this particular item, otherwise I'd like to hear.
It is this particular item because that's, I think, you may or may not agree, but that's, we allow exemptions. So if they do come back to the council, that's when we can make that, if we leave this language in, they still have the opportunity to come and ask for an exemption. And that's where, you know, somebody, somebody who's having a baby versus somebody who wants to cram a lot more restaurant seats in, and, you know, increase the parking, that's where we could make that determination. So that's where I finally came down with, I'm okay with that, because we do have provisions for exemptions. So, I think, don't we?
We, we do for planned, master planned developments, like restaurants, when they come in, they, there are certain things that you can exempt. FAR setbacks. Once a single-family home is built, the, there's not many avenues to come back before the council. Even a variance is very difficult to get. The findings required for variance really have to do with some physical characteristic of the site that prevents them from building in a conforming manner, like a rockout crop, or a slope, or something. It'd be tough to make those findings unless you want to provide a process for doing that. And I also wanted to point out that our residential parking is based just on the unit type, a single-family duplex. Many other parking for residential schemes, zoning schemes, are based on bedrooms, the number of bedrooms. And they're assessing parking by the number of bedrooms. So when you do add these bedrooms, there's the potential you, those kids grow up, and they start driving, and there's more cars, and that would be the, the impact there. Now, in Washington Park, they typically have the driveways that can accommodate tandem and that type of off-street parking. And that may not, that may be a lesser concern, but just be aware, that's there.
So it may not be an immediate negative impact, but it could be a longer-term impact, though not to the exterior, but to the neighborhood in broader sense.
Right, and you're absolutely right. Nobody will ever know if there's a floor in there or not. And we've already taken the mass. We've already had the hit on the mass from the street. It's really how the dwelling, how much intensity goes on in the dwelling in terms of bedrooms and-
Vice Mayor, your additional comments?
Well, I overall want to say that I think that, in general, these changes are, maybe with the exception of number five, minor enhancements that I think make sense. I do want to particularly highlight number three, the outdoor storage trash recycling areas. I think we have to look at that on the positive side of things. One is, I believe that people underestimate on purpose those needs because they want to save valuable space. No business makes money because they've got adequate store, trash area. And, you know, Bob Hurley across the street is the perfect example. You want to talk about maxed out. And right now, he can't put a blue recycling bin out there without everybody walking by his restaurant seeing these bins out there, because we will count more FAR against him, which we won't let him do. So this kind of thing, I think, makes total sense. And I also very much agree with the facade of both homes, assume this is homes and commercial buildings. You know, when you really kind of get down to the FARs, our FARs are very, very restrictive, in my opinion, which has some good things to it. But if you can get 40 more square foot in a building, sometimes that makes a large difference for what you can do with that. So I think that makes sense. And I think number five, I just don't personally see any penalty to anybody who's existing. If they're already maxed out on their FAR, that's where they should be. I think this is a really good loophole to close for future construction, because I only see the really impact. And then we're not going back to people saying, you know, this very issue. I mean, intent's the intent, but whoever originally built it, I have a feeling came here and said, oh, you know, I understand the rules, and I'm not asking to do that. And then they'll, you know, it's bought 20 years later by somebody else, and they're like, I don't even know who built it. And I just think it's, I think it's a good one. So I support, as written, everything in here.
Thank you. As do I. I think, I want to commend Bob on your, really kind of using common sense to adjust our calculations. I think this speaks to the intent of the ordinance. And you are, because we have, I think, at times, got caught up in the, the numbers and the calculations, and this is really kind of addressing what our end result intent is. If it's encouraging, you know, green recycling, having more interesting exterior with architectural elements, I get all of those reasons, and I think they all make sense. And I think it was a worthwhile discussion on item five. I'm comfortable with it. I think it, it does, again, speak to the intent of the ordinance. While I think there may be the occasions that it does have a negative impact on somebody that they can't do what they want to do, but I understand the exterior impact isn't the only impact. And I think Councilmember Hall made that very good point, that eventually there is that use impact, not just the physical impact, on the, on the neighbors in the, in that community that speaks to the impact of the floor area ratio limit. So I support it as written, and I think it does make sense. So I get the sense that we might be in a position to introduce this ordinance, if that is the case, if somebody were to take that motion?
Motion to introduce and waive the reading of ordinance number 3911, amending the Yavu Municipal Code Title 17, Chapter 17 dot 08, Definitions Title 18, Chapter 18 dot 36, Residential Buildings, and Chapter 18 dot 40, Commercial Buildings, to amend the methodology for calculation of residential and commercial floor area ratio FAR.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that initial introduction. We will move on to administrative and regular items. Master fee schedule introduction, and I know we have seen this already.
That is correct. So I am going to try and basically indicate that the proposed resolution is before you. It's a draft outline. I don't want to go into a lot of detail if you don't have questions. The master fee schedule's outlined. It includes an overview purpose statement. It focuses on administrative, parks and recreation, planning building department, public works and engineering, water, wastewater rates, contract services. Provides a fee adjustment history and an appendix with prior resolutions and ordinance. I think it's important to note that we tried to indicate the history, the context, and a methodology, a very brief methodology of how the fee is calculated. And that, for the most part, what you're seeing in this ordinance does not reflect a plethora of new charges. It actually reflects a very detailed and exhaustive history of staff pulling out of the town's 40-some years' history and trying to put all of these in a categorical area. The other, I think, significant element that we're trying to do is establish an annual review, where the fees will be indexed annually and adjusted, so that we don't fall out of scale from a cost recovery standpoint. We've identified the CPI index. We're suggesting using an April benchmark, so that we have adequate time every year during the budget process to clean up and have the fee schedule reviewed at the part of the budget process ready to be effective July 1. Proposed new fees and charges, and I will just highlight the areas where there are some. Bingo permit fees is an exemption for nonprofits. ABC license review, an exemption for one-day and nonprofit, but for businesses that might need one. These are areas where we've been providing service, not collecting. Business license tax processing and renewal fee. Town manager permit required by municipal code processing fee. Rental use of message trailer. Taxi permit. Pedicab permit. Encroachment permits, major, medium, regular, and minor. Penalty for not having an encroachment permit. Grading permit. Spilled load cleanup. Damaged streetlight replacement. Planning, technology, and records management fee adding as a part of building permit to cover costs associated with keeping records, electronic management systems. Building inspection charges outside of normal hours. Building inspection, reinspection. Building inspection cancellation fee. Additional inspections beyond what is included in the base building permit fee. Inspections for which no specific fee has been indicated. And also allows for additional town services and equipment, related costs to be recovered as a condition of special event permit, and then expedited or expressed plan review or initial review. You'll note that there's a theme and consistency with many of those, in some of those areas. We've never charged a fee, and staff has been incurring, especially in the planning, building inspection, and planning and engineering. We absorb those costs as a general fund ratepayer, and based on council's previous instructions, that was an area that you've asked us to try to improve on cost recovery. The other footnote that I want to share is that this particular draft fee resolution includes the recommended recreation and park fee adjustments and phasing as was introduced and presented to you in the council workshops for the budget. Staff is here and has, were prepared to answer questions that you, or the very involved and active public, may have in our, in our fee structure.
Thank you very much. So one item in the staff report that I do want to highlight before asking for discussion is a reminder that state law prohibits us from making a profit.
Thank you. You're absolutely correct. I apologize for that.
And I'll just, I'll just read that one line here. "The town is not able to make an overall profit on the fees and charges collected. The town is able to fully recover its appropriate costs to deliver the service." So that's just a reminder to folks when reviewing these recalculations. So with that, are there any specific questions, Councilmember Hall and staff?
Yeah, I have a question, Steve. And that is on that exact language. I recognize that, you know, the town's not out to make a buck on the back of the residence. The question I have is, when you say the overall, fully recover its appropriate costs, does that include administrative overhead and load and everything else? I mean, we're talking about, as you know, OPEB loads and everything else that has to go into the cost of doing business in town. Are we recovering part of that through the fees whenever we're charging them? And that's the simple question.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Muller.
Um, this might have some historical reason for being this way, but I'm just curious, when you talk about the, the business annual license, why is the word tax on the end?
Actually, I'm very happy to answer that. The business license tax is a tax. It is not a license fee. It's been called that, and it's just historically, it has been a tax. And if you're not familiar, several years ago, California state law went through it, clarified that the business license tax is a tax for the pleasure of doing business. It has no regulatory, it actually has no permit. For example, you still have to get a conditional use permit. And in fact, now, the business license tax is subject to a voter referendum. So any changes in the business license tax requires an affirmative vote of the public. We have a very poor and outdated business license tax provision.
Okay, but then maybe, this is really the, like, I have a business in town, and I send somebody here 20 bucks or 15 bucks around. That's the tax you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
$20.
So-
$100 if you're a peddler. We seem to go after peddlers much more than we do anybody else.
It's deductible, by the way. Thank you, Mr. Accountant. Okay, so are you suggesting that maybe this be something that we might revisit in the future for certain types of businesses?
I'm, you guys know me well enough to know that I'm never going to say never, because this is a category. But I also think we need to look at some other areas. And one of the things that you will see in there is, we lose money currently on this proposition, so we will institute a processing and application fee, which I did review with Arnold to determine that it's appropriate. Yes, this could be an area if the council has an interest, because, one, you're going to have to explain why, and what you might want to do with the revenue stream to support it. But it certainly is an area that could be done. Many communities in the state of California have significantly updated and reviewed their, their business license. I'm also going to take a practical side, because I've already done some brief analysis. And we have such a nominal business sector that I'm not sure how, you know, we made the, the train may have left the station, and I don't know how cost-effective it is to do a whole lot more. Because, I mean, we're talking about a, a major overhaul, but, I mean, it's not uncommon in many communities that a base business license starts in the several hundred range. And for some of our hotels would be, you know, thousands of dollars. That's not our current structure, and I don't know if the environment to change that. We certainly, I mean, I would take feedback from the council on, as to that's an assignment staff would like to work on.
Any other questions? Councilmember Dornbecker, Vice Mayor? The one question I have is maybe more for Samantha or Lisa, related to park rental, so page 10 of the fee schedule. Because the sections are broken down by specific areas, you're charging for, not, you don't, you don't charge for the entire park, and they use a portion of it. You charge them by that portion, in some cases. So is it possible to have a visual aid component to this schedule or not? Maybe you have a map that says, this is parcel A that we're talking about, parcel B. So people would know what they're renting or not.
Could I help? I'll, I'll take this. I apologize, Sam. I don't-
I was really looking forward to it.
I know. The answer is, they have that. And I want to separate the actual booking and referring that. This is a master fee schedule that's going to get posted. And when somebody wants to come there, they actually do have that. They actually have a chart and a picture, and they can do that. But to embed that into the master fee schedule, you're going to end, you know, then the question, I'm just saying, then the question comes, do you put all the applications?
Okay. Fair enough.
So I'm just saying, we do have that as a tool, a resource that, you know, when the user comes. I'm just, that's-
Got it. Good.
But if the council sees that as an important indication, indicator on here, we could always say something to the effect of north part, you know, northeast site. We could do some sort of directional, where it says site one, or, you know, give it a little bit of-
I'm fine leaving that to your discretion, and I understand the fact that this is really a cost chart, and that's fine. And there are other opportunities for the visual, the visual aids. So, great.
Great visual aids on our website.
Excellent.
And there are free sites as well. Not everything comes with a cost.
So I would offer an opportunity for the public to comment on this, but since we have no one in the audience, I'm going to move right along to any other input from the council. Or are we going to accept the, let's see, are you looking for an actual vote on this, adopting a fee schedule? Yes, you are?
No.
No, you're not. That was a draft.
This is, and I, we brought it to you earlier. We brought it because this is a significant change in format. We wanted to make sure that you, the council, and the community was comfortable. Again, with the one caveat that we need to go in and add the administrative use permit to the planning and building section. Our intent would be to have this on the June 21 council, in basically, you know, pretty much the same format you're seeing it tonight. We felt that we wanted to give you an opportunity that if there were significant substantive changes or questions, we could resolve them and bring them back.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll just move right on then to 12B, Budget Work Session Fiscal Policy Review. And I know that we went at great length reviewing these policies earlier today in our extended budget work session. So I'll ask council if they had any follow-up questions of staff-
No.
On any of these policies?
No.
In which case, they are received? And have, has staff been given proper direction?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Staff informational reports, do we have any?
No.
Councilmember meeting reports and comments. And I will start with council member meeting reports. LAFCO, did you have a meeting?
LAFCO met yesterday at the Board of Supervisors Chamber in Napa. The action taken by LAFCO yesterday was to extend the Napa sanitation district, specifically to allow water access to the Stanley Ranch area that is within the city of Napa boundaries. And the main, there was two main reasons for that. One, the main reason is the St. Regis proposed project. The second reason that so much property was included, supposedly, was to allow recycled water access to be provided underneath the Napa River, over to where the recycled water is processed. There's, a pipe is going to be put underneath the Napa River for St. Regis and the vineyard properties there, and also a connection made in the future to the Los Carneros Water District that exists there today. So the goal there is recycled water. There was really no discussion, it's within the city of Napa's jurisdiction already. There was really no discussion, it's within the city of Napa's jurisdiction already. And they'd gone through a very long and extensive environmental process and mitigation process to make that happen. So, that's what happened at Lafco. Lafco did set its meeting schedule for the second half of the year, which is going to be in August, October, November, and December. And there is a state association, Cal Lafco, which is having its annual meeting here in Napa County at the Silver Auto Resort. And I believe that's on August 30th through September 1st, or it's the 31st through, I should look at the, yeah, 31st through, that's, I can't believe it's on the map already, the calendar. 31st through Friday the 2nd, Cal Lafco is going to be here in Napa County. So, that, that will be good. And the interesting thing about that is last year, Cal Lafco had a very large schism between northern California, I'm sorry, really southern California and the rest of the state about getting their own interests put forward. So, anyway, we'll see how that all, if that's all shaken itself out by September. That's it.
And I'll invite the Vice Mayor to speak to our last Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency meeting, if you can remember.
(laughing)
That was a number of weeks ago now, actually.
No, I haven't thought, I hadn't thought about that one.
All right, we'll move right along. Because I can't help you out with that one. You're here. I'll review that and if there are any highlights, I'll, I'll bring those back up at our next meeting. Napa River Watershed Information Center, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar. As everyone hopefully recalls, I, I brought this meeting up multiple times at the council. This actually was hosted here in the town of Yountville. I had the honor of actually welcoming the group to the town. It was really fantastic. There was over a hundred and fifty individuals, not just local but also external to Napa County, who came here to really recognize what Napa County has done with regards to the watershed and with our planning. We're internationally recognized in this community and we should be proud of that. It was actually very humbling to be in front of a lot of people and being able to talk about the success story that Yountville has had with regards to its support of maintaining and supporting the watershed. And it was, we got a lot of people coming up and saying, wow, it's impressive to see, you know, LEED-certified hotels and LEED-certified buildings in the community and, and how we've really been proactive and taken sort of the, you know, the first steps that, that many of our brethren and other municipalities haven't quite had the luxury of taking. I'll just go through very briefly what the symposium goals were. The highlight of it, of it was really just to present what success stories Napa County has had. And, and their goals were to articulate common watershed goals, to survey completed and ongoing watershed projects, to recognize progress towards those goals, to identify the watershed's needs so that we can strategically plan for future projects, to highlight the need to continue collaborative efforts to reach the goals, and lastly, to evaluate sources for funding in the future and how best to obtain the funding. There was a lot of really good speakers. Again, it focused on what Napa County was a hundred years ago, what it was two decades ago, and what it is today. And what was very interesting was watching Napa County a hundred years ago, and a lot of this is all estimated because we don't have maps of necessarily how many oak groves there were. But then to see those same estimates, what they looked like twenty years ago and then today, or, you know, in the last couple of years, to show that we have had remarkable progress. Because there's been a concerted effort by the community and it's being led by organizations, not just the WIC, but also by municipalities like ours. And so, I encourage all of us to be supportive of, of those kinds of efforts. There was a meeting last week, pardon me, May 26th. It was a shorter meeting. There was two principal items that were reported on. One was on the Corona and Twin Peaks Mines, the water that's flowing through or out of those mines and the drainage associated with, with mercury. Of course, we're all familiar with that here, if you're eating fish. And lastly, there was a report by the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality on the water discharge response and requirement changes that are going on. So, that, that's more information that will be forthcoming.
Thank you. And thank you for representing the town at the symposium.
Was proud to do it.
I heard good things about your comments.
Oh, boy.
Let's see, do we have any other specific meetings? I know, I believe, we discussed earlier today, but we wanted to revisit a little bit about the library situation. I was going to ask either Councilmember Mueller or Dornbecker, who have been sitting on that ad hoc committee, to give us a bit of an update on some potential new developments.
Well, this is really not related to the ad hoc committee. I was just asked by Linda Conchilian, who the council has appointed to be the Yountville representative on the Napa City Council Library Commission. So, that, I'm just delivering her report.
Okay.
For her, since she won't be around for either of our meetings in June and we're not going to meet early in July. A lot of her efforts earlier, we've, she's almost finishing out her six-month appointments, has been on creating art in the Yountville Library. So, she's worked with the Parks and Recs Department and hung up some of the, the metal work that the, the library art will now hang on. But she's had to work through the Napa City Council. We can't just go in and hang up art. We have to work through their arts commission. So, she, in my opinion, has diligently made sure that that stayed on the agenda and now that should be coming to fruition in the next couple of months or so. An additional thing that Linda has contributed significantly to, and I think there's been, she echoes and extremely well represents many of the people here in Yountville, has brought to the commission's attention and our head of the Library Commission, the, the need for perhaps use of volunteers in the, in the Yountville Library. Our Yountville Library, that's what we call it, but it's called by the Napa City County Library Commission as a station. And maybe that worked to our benefit because when that, they looked into using volunteers, it was a very nice example of another small system in Siskiyou County. And following that model, they were able, in hours that they were normally closed, to keep them open with the use of volunteers. What they did was they actually called it a volunteer program for station libraries, which fits right in with us. There would be limited services, such as you could only self-check out a book, which is not very hard. You just want, you know, you probably do that at Home Depot now. And you could use a catalog and the internet. So, that was discussed at the May commission meeting and it met with acceptance by everybody on the commission. So, they'll be moving forward with that and we'll, I'm sure Linda, whoever our next representative we appoint is, will keep us up to date. So, I think that's pretty exciting news.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker, any specific meeting reports?
No, but we, Marjorie and I are going to be meeting with Linda on Thursday for strategy session and our next steps. And I plan to meet with the county head of the, Dennis, Dennis?
Dennis.
You know, to just sort of get to know her and start to work on an agreement.
And I did remind Supervisor Luce and Supervisor Dillon, just today at the flood control meeting, about our concerns with...
Thank you.
...the costs and, and the service levels. So...
Thank you.
I kind of rebriefed them on that. Vice Mayor, any meeting reports that just came to mind?
Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency. Small things that neither myself nor the mayor remembered, included a approval of a nearly twenty million dollar budget. And also...
Seems so long ago.
I know. Oh, by the way. Also, an increase in fares for the whole system, although there's...
I think we were intentionally forgetting this.
Small things. That's mainly driven by a need to meet certain fare box requirements that are set out in state and federal transportation funds. I think the good thing about NCTPA now is, I feel like ever since I've been on that agency, it's been in a, kind of a cleanup mode of trying to get itself kind of righted. And our executive director and their staff have done a good job. And they're now really focused on what they should be focused on, which is, how do we make transit better? How do we get more people riding? How do we improve our, our routes and the timing of those routes? So, I really, I really feel good that in the next year, that we're going to start to see even more improvements specifically in the vine service and hopefully in ridership. And then another thing on the library, I did briefly attend before coming back up here for budget meetings today, the, the ribbon cutting ceremony at the Napa Main Library. That's been closed for, I don't know how long that was closed, a month or two or?
A week.
And, you know, it was basically a, a very nice refresh of the inside. They've rearranged some of the different sections. And instead of looking and feeling like a building from the seventies, it looks and feels like a building that's, that's modern. And they've got a very nice teen room that's now their area and the periodicals area and the Spanish, it, it all looks really good and much more user-friendly.
I'm dying to know if they opened the time capsule.
They opened the time capsule after I left.
Oh, bummer.
Yeah.
Just one last...
There was a bar of gold inside, I'm sure.
Also, Councilmember Shilton, did they happen to mention the ridership of the trolley at the meeting?
At the...
NCTPA meeting?
Uh, we usually have to ask them, but ridership is obvious, I mean, there's a clear understanding that ever since we changed the route, that ridership has gone up significantly. So, I think all indicators for the Yountville Trolley are good.
And frankly, when it's not discussed, it's a good thing. Because all the conversation is about the ridership concerns and whether they're, they have to continue to adjust routes, which they have done some. And also, just to comment further on the fee structure change, they, there was a, a very inclusive consultant study done. And one of the basic outcomes was riders are willing to pay a little more if they get a quality, reliable service. And that was kind of a general tone. And that was one of the reasons that I think there was a comfort level with providing, you know, or having the fee increases, because the riders themselves are saying, we will take this, but those buses have to be on time. They need to be, you know, reliable and, and efficient. And so, there's an understanding that sometimes more money is needed to make those things happen. So, now, it's about providing that level of operational excellence. So, I will, that also helped me remember, again, seems so long ago, Secretary Lahood's visit. And I'll get to that when I get to comments, but specifically flood control, the board did meet today. And as is the theme this time of year, there is a preliminary adoption of the 2011-12 budget. And also, there is an approval to, once again, levy the annual assessments for the special flood districts. There was also the regular, regular update of street closures as they relate to the bypass work down there. If any of us or those of you listening live near First and Third Streets, just figure out what days they're going to close. I mean, they, over the next thirty to sixty days are going to be additional street closures. It's that short-term pain for the long-term gain that's going on. But the city of Napa is also trying to do what they can to help the impacted businesses and the residents with signage and detours. And they certainly understand that there are some negative impacts going on, but really to solve the flood problems down there is a much greater, greater goal. So, I did also attend with some members of our staff and volunteers, the Yountville Arts Committee meeting last night, just to give you a few updates. We are expecting additional sculptures to populate the Art Walk in the coming weeks. We also have a report that the Cas Pamplona gift is on a ship, we believe, from Spain as we speak, to arrive here the first week of July. And there'll be a very special event, July 16th, to potentially literally unveil the sculpture and that process. A bang, something. The next community center art gallery show is slated for the end of this month, on or about June 30th. The fundraising drive is well underway for the Silver Twist sculpture in front of the community hall. So, look for that, those postings around town. Also, on July 24th, there's going to be a mystery writers panel, where we have three highly acclaimed mystery writers coming to town that will be here to talk about writing and describing their, their books, their process. So, you have a chance to meet and ask questions of those writers. That is about it for the updates. I have the last one, getting back to Secretary of Transportation Lahood's visit. And I want to again commend Public Works Director Graham Wattsworth and, and all of our staff that was part of that visit. It was a very special occasion to have the secretary here in Yountville, looking at our bike path as the first step in this valley-wide effort. And he was very complimentary of our community, as well as that, that project in particular. He acknowledged, we need to take steps today for the next generation, that we want to encourage the healthy, active recreational living. I remember one of his other comments was, he's so surprised at how beautiful our community is and that we still welcome people to come visit. As he said, it's one of the most beautiful places he's ever visited. Most places like that are very exclusionary and they just want to have it for themselves and don't like people to come visit. And he commended us for our welcoming even some very colorful skaters that decided to join us and to remind us, it's not just a bike and pedestrian pathway, but it's for those roller skaters out there as well. So, with that, I think that's it for, are there any additional comments that council would like? Councilmember Mueller?
I'm just going to remind everybody today, as well as next council meeting, that on June 27th, in the council chambers at 1:30, the upper waste management board will be meeting and discussing an increase in your garbage rates in town. So, if you'd like to come and have your say, please join us.
Thank you for that reminder. Future agenda, agenda items are listed here. So, we look forward to some of those items coming to us in the next coming weeks. I will move to item 16. Is there a need for closed session?
I don't believe so, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Great. Thank you very much. With that, I would be open to a motion to adjourn to the next town council special meeting of Tuesday, June 21st. It's special because the start time is 5:15, not our regular start time. So...
Move to June, adjourn to June 15th at 5:15.
June 21st.
June 21st. Amendment. Get that down. Thank you. 5:15.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes.